Okay, good evening. I started the recording just for everybody's knowledge. Good evening and welcome to the town council meeting of Monday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty at seven P M. This meeting is being held via remote participation only. Calling this meeting to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order. Suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General law, chapter thirty A, section eighteen. And the governor's March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the town council is being conducted via remote participation only. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while progress may do so by watching Southbridge Cable Access Channel one ninety-two. Or by the remote information which is noted below on this agenda. We will post a record of this meeting on town's website at W W W dot C I dot Southbridge dot M A dot U S as soon as we are able to. A roll call vote is required for all votes taken under this order. A second here. All right, my computer's going very slow here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Katrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Dovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
I think she's frozen.
I think so too.
She is here though.
Perfect. Counselor Steves?
Present.
Everyone's here.
All members present. Item three, considering except the town council meeting minutes of Monday, December seventh, two thousand and twenty, do I have a motion?
So I move forward.
Second. Oh, motion by Counsel Steve, second by Counsel Lazo, are there any errors, corrections, or omissions on Counsel Steves?
Um, I've got a couple of things specifically. Um, item number six, the last line should read next week if I remember correctly, not last week. Um, although it's been postponed. Um, on item number eleven, it says town manager McCall said he had no experience in wastewater treatment, I think it's wet water treatment, since that's what we're talking about. And also under number twenty-one, it says Councilor Marquetti voted both yes and no, but he was definitely in now.
Okay. Thank you. Any other errors, corrections, or omissions? Anyone else? Seeing none, roll call as amended.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Katrona.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Dovan.
Yeah.
Counselor Lazo.
Upstaying.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan. Counselor Steve.
Yes.
Okay, I would just mark Counsel Ryan as present because she didn't record a vote to just record as present for right now. Um, so to me, reports general agreement, Counsel Steves.
Um, haven't had, how, we haven't had a meeting and I was originally going to schedule one for this week, but after seeing your email about postponing them, I have not done so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, about my public works, Counsel Marquetti.
Oh, we've had no meetings and per your request, there are no meetings scheduled until probably after first of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Education and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No meetings scheduled. However, we do have one agenda item. The scene, the eleven from a meeting held Tuesday, November tenth. Um, Minister ratifying agreement with Southbridge Public Schools and National Grid. No meeting scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. Plan development, Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't, I do not have one scheduled. In the near future, but I believe it's ten items, number twelve through fourteen are from the last P and D from the other day. Thank you.
Thank you. Protection of persons and property, Counsel Lazo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, no report at this time, no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. And again, uh, thank you to all the chair. Uh, the reason, and I explained my reasons for postponing the meeting, meetings, I appreciate your, uh, doing that. Uh, on behalf of the town manager's office and myself, uh, unless there's something time sensitive that you really need to get, or a department head has to get. Um, we were going to hold off, uh, because our next meeting is until January anyway, so, uh, unless there's something of major importance that we have to convene a special time on council meeting. We'll go that route, but at this point, we'll hold off until that first week in January. Uh, but feel free to contact town manager's office, uh, during this week if something has to be scheduled up. Um, so that we have it on the books and they can prepare and have a couple, uh, you know, time to do it with the holidays and the other issues that we have up there. Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? Thank you very much. Uh, Special Committee reports COVID nineteen Public Health and Safety briefing. I know Chief, uh, Normandin's here and we'll go through some of that information. We pretty much gave a pretty extensive briefing last week, um, but I'd like to thank the chief today, Chief Norman, for putting together the meeting that we held at the. Uh, community center on behalf of the emergency dispensing, uh, site. I think everybody's aware that the vaccinations are coming out this week and it's going to be a rollout. Um, and, uh, all the parties, uh, that were present today are part of the collective effort that we undertook back in March as, as a community. Um, sent together the emergency operations center, uh, to handle this pandemic. I think it's, uh, should be noted, and I'm sure Chief Norman will, uh, touch on this as well as the town manager. In our conversations today at the emerge, at the dispatch, uh, dispensing site, uh, it was noted that, uh, our regional representative for the Department of Public Health handles seventy-four towns. And out of those seventy-four towns, we were the only town that had a solid plan and ready and prepared to move forward, uh, in the next steps and handle in this pandemic. And that really is a kudos to all that have been involved in the emergency operations center. Um, right down from, uh, the town council, the leadership of the town council, the leadership of our public safety officials. Transitioning through all the other departments that participated in the emergency operations center. Um, while the numbers continue to stay pretty steady at twenty to twenty-five per week. Um, we are well-prepared to move to the next phase in the mitigation of this pandemic. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Norman for any other additional words that he might have, and then the town manager, if he'd like to, uh, jump in. Chief Norman.
Yes, uh, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the town counselors. Uh, I can honestly tell you that, uh, the chairman said everything I was going to say. Uh, we've worked very hard together. Um, as a town, uh, private entities, as you very well know, some of the pharmacies are involved with this dispensing site. Um, everybody's on the same page right now, and, uh, this will be the phase one rollout of healthcare workers and, uh, public safety employees of the town of Southbridge. Uh, to get the, uh, the vaccine. This could possibly start and open on Wednesday this week. Um, obviously, there's supposed to be a snowstorm and Harrington not, has not really, but received the tracking number for the actual shipment coming to them. Uh, so they're getting a little under a thousand doses and, uh, obviously, uh, we've been invited as firefighters and paramedics and the police department to be involved with this. Um, I, I, our working relationship that we've had with Harrington throughout these years has been phenomenal, and this really shows that, uh, they really didn't have to ask us to come on board this time. Um, and I can say with all my other constituents around the, uh, state and the region, um, no other fire department's been asked by their local hospital, so I, I really feel. Uh, very, very glad that this, this relationship is still there and is very strong. Um, other than that, Jack, you did say mostly everything I wanted to say. Uh, let's hope for Wednesday opening up and we get the ball rolling to, uh. Healthcare workers and first responders and we'll keep moving forward. Uh, I do know I worked with Dave Adams, uh, today, he may be able to shed some light, but I think we are going to do a Facebook Live with a couple of representatives on, uh. From Harrington on Friday this week, we didn't pin down the time yet, uh, but obviously, my, my email is open. Um, so I think this is a great thing, and if anybody else has any questions, obviously, uh, town manager McCall will say some words about this, but, uh, I think we're in a good spot right now, and let's just keep moving forward.
Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I, I think it's been a great group effort, a collaborative effort. Uh, the hospital has been there all along. Uh, we reached out, uh, we had a representative today from Walgreens, uh, somebody there from the state, and. You know, coming into this, um, I spoke to one of the communities I've worked with in the past this morning, and they, they weren't at this stage, and that just echoes what you said before and what the representative of the state said. Seventy-four cities and towns that they work with, we by far were way ahead, probably the first one to have a site like this, so it's just, um. A great honor to be working with a community that was that well-prepared, and again, a great group effort by everybody involved.
Any other questions, comment? Counsel Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I was noticing first off, uh, first off, I noticed that the last E O C update posted on the page, web, the town's webpage has no text to it. It just goes, it just has the headline and nothing else. Um, so if you could, you could correct that, it'd be great. Um, and also, I was curious about, um, some of the logistics here. Um, how are we arranging for the dry ice storage? Because this stuff needs dry ice, and from what I understand, uh, the dry ice only lasts a couple of days, so how long do you expect this, uh, a thousand doses to last?
So, uh, we'll let the chief explain that, but the Harrington Hospital, because of our partnership with Harrington Hospital, uh, they, they're handling all that, and they have the provisions in place, and now let's be elaborate. Any further, but that was part of our brief this morning when we met at the emergency dispensing site. Chief Norman.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. So definitely Harrington has the refrigerator that's there, uh, the dry ice is used for the shipment of, of the, uh, product, so the dry ice will probably be disposed of or set aside. Uh, there is a transportation, uh, outline that's been already, uh, put together by Harrington, uh, of, uh, people there. Um, they'll be transporting the appropriate amount of doses daily, so what they'll basically be doing is scheduling people ahead of time. They'll know exactly how many people they'll be dosing that day, and hopefully, everybody shows up, so there's, shouldn't be no extra per day. Um, the scheduling is going to be pretty, pretty tight, so that's, that's how they, they'll probably only be a very short need for the dry ice. Uh, the transporting from the hospital to, uh, to the armory where we're going to be doing it, so does that answer your question?
Um, I think it does, but the, the hospitals for refrigeration can handle negative seventy degrees C. This is.
Their pharmacy has one of those refrigerators. I don't, I, I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure this is, this is not the only medication that has to be kept at that level or near that level, so they've already had this, uh, refrigerator available to them.
Okay, that's good. That's good to know. Okay, do you have a rough idea of how long it'll take to use a thousand doses? I'm obviously, I don't assume that there are that many police, fire people and doctors and nurses and things like that, so.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can, uh, answer, what I can tell you is that there are a thousand doses, just under a thousand doses. Harrington has about fourteen hundred employees. What they're guessing is that, um, only a third or even more than a third will not get the vaccine just by their own choice. It's not mandatory. So we, we're, so it's a one for one, so soon as one person gets a dose, they go into the state system, they're automatically counted to get a, a, a second dose sent to, to Harrington for around the twenty-first day. Because this, uh, this particular med is a twenty-one day span between two, the both doses, so. Um, I, I'm pretty sure we're going to be using a good majority of those, uh, just under a thousand, just to get healthcare and public safety taken care of. Um, Harrington's got a real good, uh, accounting system for it, so that's kind of how that will work.
Okay, I didn't realize Harrington had that many. Thanks.
And the only other thing to add on to that, um, they did say today that not a drop of the vaccine would go wasted if they get through all of their employees. That they were putting together a reserve list so that all of the vaccine in this round would be used and not, none of it would be wasted.
So, uh, Counsel Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to either the police, uh, the fire chief or the town manager. Do we know when the next round will be, Steve? No.
Mr. Chairman, I can, I, I don't, I hit, I think Harrington is, is skeptical about getting the doses tomorrow, uh, as being Tuesday, I think it may be delayed a day or two. Um, I'm kind of hoping it does because we're supposed to get a fort of snow on Thursday, so, uh, but no, I, to answer your question, Counsel Katrona. I, I don't think they know, uh, as you look at some of the media outlets, they're pushing out those three, three diagrams. Um, I think right now, the first diagram is now until after probably the end of January, and then the next shipment will probably definitely be, you know, January to, to March, which would be. The nursing homes and things like that, and the people at risk, and then obviously, the third, uh, third, uh, timeframe would be March, April, and that's when the public will be able to get their doses, so. It's nothing set in stone. Obviously, they want to see how this first round goes and see where they are with, um, doing the second dose too, so everything, everything is going to roll together, I'm, I'm hoping. I have my fingers crossed, I'm hopeful though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Marquetti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, I'm, I'm just wondering, I hope this isn't repetitive, I apologize if it is, but I was just wondering. Where the, this dispensary is going to be taking place, is, is it going to be all at the armory or, uh, or, um, the hospital or?
It's, it's at the, uh, Armory Community Center. That is the site right now. And then maybe, was that, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That will be for the general public too.
Uh, we're going to see how that rolls into, we have, uh, plans for that facility as well as alternate plans, and it all will be contingent on how many doses the town can get and how we can stage. Um, but again, this goes to the fact that we are at the forefront of planning. Um, with the leadership and our police and fire departments and, uh, and our public health people, uh, to make sure that we have a coordinated effort, so. As of right now, it is the, uh, community center, uh, it's well-established, and there's a lot of work that goes into this because, uh, not only is it just dispensing this, uh, the, the shot. The, uh, right now at this preliminary stages, anybody that gets a shot has to be monitored for at least ten to fifteen minutes, make sure there's no adverse effects. Um, so they're scheduling that, and not only that, this is the two-shot vaccination, so, uh, you don't, uh. They get the first shot and then they have to schedule the second shot and make sure that everything is staggered, so it is quite a process, so that's why I'm, I'm very, very happy with the fact that, uh. We have such a team in place that we are able to get this off the ground pretty run, running seamlessly.
All right, thank you. I just was, I was just curious. I mean, I think the armory is an excellent spot. I just, I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, Chief Norman.
Just so that everybody knows, we do have an alternate site. You have to have a backup plan, so we do have a backup plan, know that we actually have a couple of them, I'm not going to name them right now, but. So if something happens at the armory, we lose heat, something happens to the building, we do have a backup, uh, site that we can go to, so redundancy is what we've done.
Uh, Mr. Town Manager.
Uh, if it wasn't already said, it's worth repeating, even if it was, they did mention today, just to remind, that this first round. Of vaccinations is only for the hospital workers in that the general public should not go up to the community center at this time. These are pre-scheduled, um, and people will be turned away and they don't need additional traffic coming up.
Okay. Thank you, and, uh, we will be doing, uh, some, uh, social media and outreach to make sure the community is aware of where we're at on this, and, uh, thank you to, uh. The chief and Counsel Adams for the social media and the media presence on that. There any other questions relative to the COVID nineteen mitigation strategy the town has? Okay. Just want to say that, uh, you know, with the holidays coming up, everybody continue to be safe, um, so that we can get through the holiday season and. Try to maintain the level that we're at now and not see tremendous spikes in, in that. Um, chairman's announcement. I said a lot last week, so, uh, I don't think there's anything to repeat. All I just want to wish to all the residents in town, um. Happy holidays. Uh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, because this is the last public meeting that town council will have until the new year. With that, I'd like to thank town counselors that I were working with this, over this last year, my previous, uh, councils that worked with me until June, and the fellow councils that I work with today. From many thanks for all the hard work that you did throughout this year, uh, getting through this, uh, pandemic, uh, and all the other issues that we have in town. And to the town hall employees and all the employees in town, police, fire, uh, D P W to continue good health, safety, uh, for all the hard work that you did throughout the town, um, during this as well. It is many thanks on behalf of myself and town, uh, for all the hard work that has gone in, uh, to making sure that we get to the end of this twenty twenty year. And hopefully, the twenty twenty-one with the vaccine and everything else will be a bright new year and, uh, during the summer months, we can enjoy and get back to the new normal. Um, with that, town manager's announcements, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first off, I have an announcement from Peg Dean, uh, that there will be a community block development grant, public hearing. The F Y twenty-one application, which will be held on January seventh, uh, six thirty by a remote. And they anticipate that the application will be due in the spring of twenty twenty-one, however, no announcements have been made yet by the State Department of Housing and Community Development to date. Uh, this will be a second of what will be three public hearings to ensure the public can provide feedback and put the application process. Um, I just want to make the council aware that I may have a need for a brief executive session regarding real property between now and the first of the year. I did bring this up briefly with, uh, the chairman, uh, at the end of last week, I may be trying to target this Thursday, but given the snowstorm, that might not be a good evening. Um, otherwise, we might do it right after the first of the year, just for timing, uh, regarding some tax issues that are coming up on the horizon. I also want to throw out at some point for discussion this, this evening's packets. As many of you know, I've been short-staffed in the last week and, uh. Going forward this week, uh, due to a few issues beyond my control, and I worked with, um, Ms. Ryan, who's been in the office, and I helped her put together the packet. And I used a tool, uh, that, that compiles, uh, PDF files, and you would have seen that it, it came with a table of contents, and it was hyperlinked to that table of contents. And I wanted to throw it out to the, the council, whether they are interested in receiving these, not for the short term, while I'm shorthanded. But also, if they would be interested in using a format like this going forward for a multitude of reasons. Um, it's environmentally friendly, it's easily searched, uh, it cuts down on the amount of costs that we have relative to paper and photocopying. Um, I know some people do like things printed out in tangible form, but this, uh, is quick and easy and easily to be amended and delivered as well. But I leave that up to the council for discussion, but, uh, for the time being, while it's just me and Ms. Ryan, part-time, I will be putting the packets together in this format.
Any questions? Go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Manager, go ahead, continue.
No, 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 if anybody has any questions, be happy to answer.
Any questions on that? Counsel Marquetti.
I don't have any question through you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any really questions about it, man. I, I don't have a problem receiving these while you're short-staffed. The problem with, uh, going forward is that some of these packets can be quite large and that costs me a lot of money to print it all out. So we do have a counselor, we do have a budget for the counselor, so I would just soon have a packet. Uh, I mean, it's the one that you sent, we, it was one form, and there was ninety-one pages, that's a lot of ink for me, so.
Right.
Uh, while you're short-staffed, I don't have a problem with it. Thank you.
Okay.
Um. Counsel Steve.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was saying that when I first saw it, uh, we get some weird echo in here from somebody. Um, when I first saw it, I thought it looked, it was a very well-laid out packet, it was, I liked the fact that you can jump from, from section to section, that was very useful. Um, I have no problem with keeping it this way, actually. I, I like the idea of being able to save the paper. If we need specific things printed out, I have no problem with asking somebody to print it, but I don't see any reason why we would need to print ninety-one pages. Or that entirely, that extremely long K and P proposal, for example. So that, that's just my thoughts.
Okay, okay. We can, we can go this for, uh, from discussion later on, uh, with the town manager and see how people like it and, uh, work through it. Mr. Town Manager, you have something else?
Uh, yes, I also wanted to just, uh, update the board. I, me last week with, um, U Mass Medical and, uh, Harrington Hospital. They wanted to talk to me and introduce me to their anchor mission project, which was based off of, um, the idea that when they're in a long-term, um. Location that they want to do a place-based economic, um. Exchange with the community focusing on their three pillars, as they call them, about sourcing, purchasing, hiring, and investing. So now that U Mass is going to be merging with Harrington Hospital, uh, they are looking to make investments into the communities, uh. At they service, and most notably, the hospitals here in Southbridge, so they're going to be looking to me to help, uh, put together some stakeholders in the community to come up with some. Um, projects that would be worthwhile for them to invest in. Um, they even invested in, um, some projects in Worcester. Um, for a first-time homebuyers, a community center for showcasing art and helping with the employing of, uh, adolescents in at-risk neighborhoods. So they were looking to do something along the line of a, a community development, uh, corporation, similar to Quaybog Valley was an idea that they had that they might want to look at for Southbridge, so. I think it's an exciting opportunity, and it would be a worthwhile endeavor to have this partnership with U Mass and Harrington, and I will keep you posted. As, uh, we continue to meet and let you know if they're looking for people to, to be involved in an advisory committee or something similar, uh, for what they look to do here in Southbridge. Also, Mr. Chairman, um, as many of you know, we did have a, an onsite meeting last week to go out to see, uh, the runoff from the Protext solar farm. Uh, we had participation from the Conservation Commission, uh, the Counsel Steves was there zoning, D P W and inspections. Um, we did observe the, the runoff, and there will be a follow-up meeting with the zoning inspections, uh, to be determined with. The, the property owners or the, the people leasing the site to, to try and mitigate the damage, uh, in the runoff coming down to the homeowners. Um, as you also may know, last week, um, the Southbridge Innovation Center had contacted our office and town hall, they wanted to do a holiday light display, which they are now doing on the side of one of their projects on optical drive. I just wanted the, um, council to know that we did make sure that this was in compliance with our zoning and inspectional requirements and codes. Uh, before we, uh, said that it would be a worthwhile endeavor and that we would lend our name to that, um, that celebration of lights, so. I think I have one last item. No, actually, um, Mr. Chairman, again, I would like to thank all the residents in Southbridge and wish them a happy holiday, uh, season, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and I look forward to seeing them and working with all of them in the year to come. And I have nothing further at this.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Uh, anybody have any questions?
Um, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Counsel Ryan.
So I just wanted to let you know I've been on, um, on this line since the, uh, the COVID, uh, situation briefing.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, if anybody has anything, uh, I'm having some technical difficulties myself, so I'm trying to operate off my phone, so I can't hammer from everybody, so if anybody has anything, just, uh. Rec, uh, say something to be recognized. Okay, moving on, presentation. Tonight, we have the chief of police, Chief Woodson, joining us along with the Animal Control Office, Caitlin Spent, uh, Spencer. Uh, who just recently received the Animal Control Officer of the Year award, and I'll turn this over to Chief Woodson. Good evening, Chief.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, through you. Good evening, uh, members of the town council, Mr. Town Manager. Um, just real quick on this for A C O Spencer, she's been employed by our department since two thousand and seventeen, and, and my twenty-five years of experience. In our community, I haven't worked with a, a more dedicated and professional, um, animal control officer who, who cares so much about the proper treatment of all animals. That certainly isn't, you know, begrudging anybody else that used to work for us in the past, but Caitlin and I, we kind of, I started as the chief on the same time she got, she came in as the A C O and. she's been a great asset to the community. So with all that said, back in October, they sent the nomination form out to the Massachusetts Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, into the Animal Rescue League of Boston, a nomination form seeking Caitlin to be nominated to be the Massachusetts ACO of the Year. There were four criteria that she had to meet. I had to send out an elaborate explanation as to why I felt that she deserved this more than anyone else in the state. Some of the criteria was she has to show a dedicated humane attitude toward the treatment of all animals. She has to be an effective enforcer of pet responsibility laws. She had to show a commitment to public awareness and education programs. And she also has to have cooperative work and relationships with other agencies, not just other ACOs, but other government entities, all of which she easily met those benchmarks. So I put it in, I didn't know how many other people had submitted, how many other chiefs. And I was pleasantly surprised on December 1st when Caitlin was notified by the MSPCA and the ARL that she, in fact, got the award to be the Massachusetts ACO of the Year for 2020. So with all that said, I had every intention on being here at the seventh meeting we had last week, but I couldn't make the meeting. I have a plaque, but you know, this is a pandemic time. I'm just going to read what the plaque says and I'll give it to Caitlin when I can see her, because I'm still under quarantine. So the plaque is Caitlin J. Spencer, Animal Control Officer, in recognition of being selected as the Massachusetts Animal Control Officer of the Year for your distinguished service to the residents of our community in the Southbridge Police Department and for your dedicated and humane attitude toward the treatment and well-being of all animals. Congratulations, ACO Spencer, presented, and it says, 7th day of December 2020 by me. And in addition to this plaque, we also have representatives from the MSPCA and the ARL, they're going to be coming to our PD this Thursday, December 17th, to do a couple of photo ops for social media and things like that, depending on the snow. So I'll keep you posted, Mr. Town Manager, if that's still happening, who knows what's going to happen with the storm. So congratulations, Caitlin.
So Caitlin, congratulations. I too, I wish we could do this in the council dais, because you certainly deserve the recognition in public and I look forward to meeting with the chief, but we do have a small, I can't show it to you right now, but we do have a small recognition thing they can frame and put up in your office. It says Caitlin Spencer, in recognition of your being selected as the Massachusetts Animal Control Officer of the Year. Presented on this, it's the seventh day, so we can still have the seventh day of December 2020. The town of Southbridge is proud to recognize you for your commitment and distinguished service to the residents of our community, to the Southbridge Police Department and for dedicated and humane attitudes towards the treatment and well-being of all animals. Signed by John D. Jovan Jr., Council Chairman, and Michael F. McCall, Town Manager. So again, congratulations, it's well deserved. The job of animal control officer is not easy. And I know from my previous experience as a police chief, it's one of those positions that I know personally as a police chief, that if we do not have an animal control officer, those responsibilities fall on the police department and probably one of those calls that I never wanted to get, because I didn't want to deal with animals. So kudos to you that you are willing to step up to the town of Southbridge and handle those responsibilities. That because it is needed, and again, no cop likes going out on those calls. I'm sure the chief will echo that comment. So again, congratulations. And Caitlin, if you want to say a few words, we'd be more than happy to have you say a few words. And if any other councils wish to say anything, please let me know.
Well, I just, I just wanted to say thank you guys for all your support throughout my three years of being in the town. It's been quite a journey. I think my first year, Chief Woodson, baptism by fire and I stayed, and I'm happy I did. 2020 has been a really difficult year for everybody, so this has just been a great highlight for me this year. And then the other thing I wanted to acknowledge is I wanted to dedicate this to Sandy Provost. Sandy was the reason why I went ahead with applying for this job when I first met her in a vaccine clinic down at the Old Town Barn, was my first interaction with her. And I said at the table, one day I'm going to be the Southbridge Animal Control Officer. And it came, came about, so I wanted to dedicate this to Sandy, especially since she was just such a public figure and, you know, her loss of this year, so. But I just want to say thank you to everybody, it was quite the highlight and it was a great, good news to hear from the state about this recognition.
To Sandy, who just recently passed away and served a long time in that position. So thank you for sharing with her and her family, I'm sure will appreciate it. Any other councils have anything to say?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to congratulate Caitlin on a well-deserved award. And I do want to recognize one of our residents, Pam Paquin, who also provided some information about you, and obviously you touched their heart and the family's heart on, on a on part of their journey through that area. And I just want to say thank you for doing that, but I wanted to recognize Pam Paquin as well, who, who kind of started with some information to myself, thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils? Well, Caitlin, I look forward to meeting you in public and giving you this little brief recognition with the chief and everybody else that can be present, so.
I don't know if you saw me or not, but yeah, I just want to say congratulations, Caitlin. You've been very easy to work with along the last three years, and I know sometimes you have, when you've come, come up to our house a couple of times and in meeting and meetings and answering questions and all the other stuff that you've had to do, and in some cases, I know you've probably felt like you've had to answer the same questions over and over and over again. And I appreciate very much your intelligence and your patience and all the stuff you've had to do, and congratulations.
Thank you. Council Markey, did you have something you want to say?
No, thank, congratulations, thank you.
All right, any other councils just speak up, because I don't have every council on my screen here. And I don't want to touch any other buttons to lose you all again. Go ahead, Council Dow.
Mr. Chair, I just want to congratulate Caitlin and not only friendly with the animal, with the human being too. So thank you and good luck.
Thank you, Council Dow. Council Haza?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to congratulate Caitlin, Caitlin. The interaction I had on education and services and various subcommittees, very professional, personal. And again, as Council Dow said, you're very good with the citizens and very protective of our pets, animals, and I think you're doing a great job and it's kind of a pride moment, not only for yourself, but for the town. I think you're doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, did you have anything you want to say? I think you're muted, Mr. Town Manager.
I want to congratulate Caitlin and also echo everybody else's comments that to have someone that can interact with the public and deal with stressful situations. I can tell you, my past time as elected official, dog hearings and barking dogs, some of the worst calls, you're dealing with neighbors, you're dealing with the animals. Someone who can handle all of that, still reassure people at the end of the day as an asset to the community and especially in light of the case that really brought her name to the forefront, she did an awesome job from my reading of those reports. So again, congratulations, you're a wonderful asset to the community.
Chief Woodson, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, if I could, just real quick, and ACO Spencer had mentioned Sandy Provost and she was the Animal Patrol Officer when I started back in 95 and she was certainly a legend in the animal world and in the police world and she blazed one heck of a trail, but Caitlin's had big, some big shoes to fill and she's certainly doing a good job filling those. And I'll also say too, one of the reasons why we're here tonight is because Council Adams had mentioned it earlier. People like Pam Peliquin stepped up, brought it to my attention that this award was pushed out in the state every year, and then Council Adams also submitted something out on the side. So three of us from the, from the same community, all pushing for this award for the rightful recipient, and that's why things like this happen. So if you see people that are doing good things in the community, please let us know and we'll run with it when we can.
Thank you, Chief. All right, Caitlin, thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing you in the dais some day soon and recognize you properly with no feedback and no computer noise and no gobbles. So thank you and have a happy, safe holiday. Guess we'll move to citizens forum. I'll do my best for what I have limited here, is anybody that wishes to address the council, could just state your name? Anyone? See mostly council is on. I have one that says new, but I'm not sure who that is. Does anybody wishes to address the council on anything not on the agenda? All right, moving on. I intend both to accept the donation of $5,369 to the fire department from a local business who wishes to remain anonymous to be used towards a purchase of future firefighting equipment, is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
I'll go, Council Ryan second and by Council Daniel, I believe.
Give me, okay, yeah, so just a quick, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a quick, this is definitely self-explanatory. We did a call, the, the person that owned the business came in a few days later and said, what do you need for a piece of equipment? They wanted, so they donated the, the check to us. Obviously, we need to get that approved for acceptance to the town council. Soon as we do that, if that happens here tonight, I actually could probably just order the one particular piece of equipment. It's a, it's an exhaust fan that we're looking to get, it's battery operated. It's something that we don't have and we have a place to put it on our primary engine.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, any questions to the chief? Any questions? I can't see anybody's hand, so if you just speak up if you have any, if not, go ahead, Council Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Chief, thank you for your hard work, you and your guys, I guess you guys doing a great job lately, you being responsible for wildfires and God bless you all, thank you.
Thank you, Council Lazo?
You're muted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that this wasn't brought, we talked about it, as far as bringing this to PPP. Is we need to bring something like this to PPP? And I think they need the equipment, it's, I'd suggested to move it forward with you. It's a donation and I'd just like to say thank you to the one that's donating it anonymously to the town of Southbridge, generosity in town continues, thank you.
Thank you, Chief, Council Lazo, anybody else? Anyone else? Not hearing anyone else, roll call?
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lazo?
Yes.
Council Markey?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
And Council Adams?
Yes.
Motion cares, item 11, vote to ratify the agreement between the Southbridge Public Schools and National Grid for custom retrofit lighting at the Southbridge Middle High School, 132 Tory Road, in the amount of $64,884 to pay, be paid in monthly installments of $1,371.75 for 48 months, is there a question?
So moved.
Motion by Council Ryan, second by Council Lazo, Council Markey?
Thank you, I think this went through Council Katrona's subcommittee.
Council Katrona, I apologize, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This did go through EHS on November 10th and was voted 3-0 to send it to council for ratification, thank you.
Thank you, are there any questions, comments? Mr. Town Manager, you have anything you want to add?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I would like to defer to Mr. Como from the school department who's on the line. I had previously met with Mr. Como and Dr. Vilar remotely to discuss this, this is something they'd done in the past. And they realized they would bring it to the council for a vote. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Como to handle any specific questions. It, it, just before I do, Council Steve, I have continually sent email, I know the folks at National Grid were working on that report. They thought they would have had it in time for this, they indicated, but I don't, as soon as I get it. For those of you who weren't at the subcommittee meeting, Council Steve's had inquired if we could get a report, a status of some of the similar lighting projects in the past. I am working on that and I will get it to the, the full council once I receive it from National Grid in the consult. So with that, I turn it over to Mr. Como.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCall.
Mr. Como?
All right, I'm here to answer any questions you have. They said we've done this in the past, the last couple of projects worked out very well. Getting rid of all the old incandescent lights and ballast and all new LED fixtures at really basically no cost to us. The cost you see on the sheet there, what we'd be paying, that'd be paying National Grid. If we don't do this project, we're still going to be paying the same amount of money as if we're doing the project. But this way here, we get 606 new fixtures that are warranty for five years that we don't have to touch them. As far as purchasing new ones, they're all warranted, they have one year of labor. The past projects we've done, actually, we're still within that five years and I called on, I think maybe four fixtures that needed to be replaced and they sent them right out to us and and taken care of right away. You know, our cost on there is really, it's like $27 more a month is what we're going to be spending on our bill. And after four years, we will not only not pay that $27, but we'll also not be paying out that $1,350 a month. So that's what we'll be seeing our savings is after that four years. But we also be seeing the savings over the four years of not having to replace light bulbs and ballast in the present fixtures that we have. So it's a, it's a win-win for us, not doing it would be foolish. You know, LEDs are the way of the future, I mean, every light eventually is going to be an LED light, they save a lot of energy. Any questions?
I have a few. Through you, Mr. Chairman. If you're recognizing me.
Yeah, go ahead, yes, sir.
When this came up at the subcommittee meeting, I, I questioned this because it didn't seem clear to me. When I look at the agenda item, it says, Public, Southbridge Public Schools agree to pay back to National Grid the authorized bill repayment amount, $64,000. So we are paying for these lights of the town manager, sorry, the council chairman said that we are not paying for this, that basically I thought you were implying that this, these are free, but I don't think there, it doesn't look to me like they're free, I mean, I could be mistaken. If they're completely free, then maybe I could change my mind, but it's when I see something that says that we're paying for something, then we're paying for it, it says monthly financed 48 month, 48 months. A finance means to me we're paying for it. So that's what I was a little confused about. And that's why I was just asking for some clarification, are we paying for these lights or not? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Not, we're if we don't change the lights, we're still going to pay the same, say our monthly bill is $10,000 a month for electricity. If we don't change the lights, it's still going to be 10,000. If we change the lights, it'll still be 10,000 for four years. With those new fixtures after those four years, then we'll see a drop in our, in our bill from 10,000 down to like 8,000. Really not actually paying for them, you're not going to see that, that you're paying for them, it's, it's all part of the, the package of the savings, the, the electricity you're saving by them putting this, these fixtures in is the money that they be getting. So if we don't change them, we, it's going to cost us more electricity because of the, the type of fixtures that we have. So there's really no money to, to play with, to do whatever you want with, it's not there.
Well, if I could continue, I it still says to me that the, the town of Southbridge is paying for these lights. That's what it says to me. There could be a savings. I won't, I don't doubt it. Those light bulbs also cost money when you do have to replace them, I know that I have had to replace those kind of lights and they aren't cheap. But to me, we are still paying for the lights, and I know that when we went through the budget season, there were quite a few items that Um, there were quite a few items that the, uh, Dr. Vilar. Had to cut out because we didn't have the money to pay. I mean, he wanted to do asphalt work, we cut it out. He wanted to replace some drywall for sixty thousand dollars, we couldn't, we wouldn't allow that, so. Now we wanna pay sixty-four thousand dollars for lights, and that's what it looks like to me, we are paying sixty-four thousand dollars. For the lights. So that's where the confusion comes from. And it's, you're making it sound like we're not paying anything for these lights, but we are paying for these lights, so. That's all, um, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thanks, Council Marquetti, I'll go to the town manager in a, in a second, but just, uh, for the record, I, I asked that question because my. What I asked at that meeting was not whether we were paying for it, I asked the, directly to Mr. Como. To clarify, was any money coming from, because your comment at that meeting was. That the sixty-four thousand dollars could be better used somewhere else. So my follow-up question was, were we putting out sixty-four thousand dollars? And the answer was no, so, and that's what I'm understanding tonight. So that's, I, I understand your frustration with it, uh, but I, Claire was clearly asked. Or asking him to respond to the fact that you had stated that we're, sixty-four thousand could be better spent somewhere else. Which I totally agree, sixty-four thousand dollars could be spent somewhere else, better. However, the presentation was that there was no money out of pocket except for maybe twenty-four dollars more a month. So with that, I'll go to the town manager first and then Mr. Como if he wants to respond to that. Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, all I want to, uh, say was that my understanding was, there is no increase. As Mr. Como mentioned, over the monthly amount that we're already paying for these lights. So, yes, we are paying for them, but we're paying it from the, from the net savings that we, we get. You could think of it two ways, i- if we weren't paying them back. Um, through the net savings, we would have to purchase these in a lump sum and then we would recoup the savings. Instead, we're letting them take the savings, that difference between what we're paying now and what we would be, uh, saving. And that goes to them for the four years, and after that, then we recoup all the savings after that point. So there's, there's no increase on the monthly basis of what we're paying. It's just for the first four years, we don't realize the savings that's going to them. So if we do nothing, we pay the same amount, if we do this, we pay the same amount for four years, and that's my understanding.
Alright.
That's correct. There is, there is no cash out that, um, unless you wanted to pay the ninety thousand dollars and purchase all this and then. Do the savings from there. Um, for four years, we're just letting them take this, their savings of electricity. And then after that four years, then we'll see that thirteen hundred dollars extra a month off of our bills.
Could I have just one quick follow-up?
Go ahead, okay.
Reading this over, it says that you, this has to be done by tomorrow, from what I can tell. So have you already started this project, or, it also says you have till the end of our sixty days, which would be the end of the year. You have to have this done by the end of the year, I guess, you don't really have much time to do this, so have you already started this project, or?
No. Project has not been started yet without, uh, blessing of the council.
But then you're not gonna have much time to do this.
They're gonna be pressuring to, to get in there and do it as fast as they can and they'll send, um, a good-sized crew in.
That would have to be done over Christmas break?
Yes, they'll be working, uh, during Christmas break, a lot of times they've worked on Saturdays and Sundays. Um, to try to get it in as fast as possible, because they wanna get it done before the first of the year. Because there are new monies coming out at, um, starting, uh, January first, so that for other projects within that building. To eventually turn the whole building into LED lighting. So we'll be coming, coming to the council again, hopefully by, you know, February or so for another phase of the building.
Uh, thank you, I mean, it, it's pretty good explanation, I, I just was a little, uh, just wanted some clarification, I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Council Dow, go on.
Give us a chance through you, just one, uh, small question, how old that high school?
Two thousand twelve was when we opened. So the lights have probably been in there for nine years.
So, two thousand twelve, the, uh, LED light wasn't exist at that time?
Um, they came to me a year or two ago, they wanted to do the same project, but the payback wasn't as good. Because they, it was a, a different phase of LEDs, of another generation. I said, come back after you have the next generation in, which is gonna be even more savings of electricity with the, because every generation. There's more savings, uh, of electricity, they, they're, they're bettering their LED performance. So, um, back then there was LEDs out there, but they were very expensive at the time. And there were no re-gates for, for new construction, so the only LEDs we did get were in the auditoriums. The auditorium area where they're hard-to-reach areas, so I knew they would last for a long period of time, um, and then out in the parking lots.
And what's the life on those, uh, LED light, you say only four years, uh, warranty on them through the electric company? How much you, how long usually the life on those LED?
They, they can go, it, you, you never know, I mean, they, they warranty them for five years, they're saying, uh, ten to fifteen. Um, before you have to change them out, and like I said, the, the price of LEDs is, is really coming down. Um, they're not as expensive as they used to be.
Because I'm not sure some LED lifetime warranty, I'm not sure if that will be, um, to, to look at it, or?
No, but these are the ones the National Grid are recommending. Um, and they have, they said a five-year warranty for full replacement.
So after five years, we might spend another sixty-four thousand to change the light bulb, or not necessarily?
No. No, they're gonna, for, for five, they're gonna be at, at least a ten-year, ten-to-fifteen-year fixture, if not longer. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone else? To none, roll call.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Joe Van?
Yes.
Council Lazo?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
And Council Catrona?
Yes. Miss May.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Sorry, got that.
Alright, motion carries, thank you, Michael.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen.
Item twelve, vote to approve the shared wood to streets and spaces grant application to promote a more walkable salvage. In the amount of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, is there?
Second.
Alright, motion by Council Lazo, second by Council Steve's, um, just planning, uh, DPW, DPW?
Uh, it's planning development, Mr. Chairman.
And development, yeah.
Just, uh, we had this agenda item, next three agenda items on the eighth of December. And it was a four zero zero vote in favor of. And, uh, from there I'll pass it on to Peg Dean if you don't want.
Good evening, Miss Dean. Welcome. Thank you, I'm muted there, Peg.
Forgive me. Good evening, okay, if I may give a quick summary.
Go ahead.
The shared streets grant had four prior grant rounds with awards given out between July and October. To date, the town hasn't applied for funds. This newest availability of funds emphasizes creating outdoor winter spaces. Encourages improving newly installed plaza and scores those who seek to make these spaces permanent higher. This will help transform the new Central Street Plaza into a community space and promote the downtown in the hopes of jump-starting some economic development. Uh, coordinating with the DPW and police, we sought to include projects to improve pedestrian safety. Initially, at and around Main Street, tying the Plaza to Main Street as a walkable Main Street theme. Uh, we learned at the eleventh hour that we were permitted to expand that theme to a walkable South Bridge. Which led to the addition of the four more rapid flashing beacons and the Lebanon Hill pedestrian signs. Note that on your memo, at some point it states the pedestrian sign is a speed sign, please note these are pedestrian signs. Uh, previous rounds did not permit funding for equipment for spaces. However, the state has assured us that asking shouldn't hurt our chances, that we may just get partial funding for our request if they don't deem it as awardable.
Oh, I have some questions.
Go, Council Marquetti.
Um, although, I, I guess that having, uh, some safer crosswalks is a good idea, although I think. Sometimes those lights run time very distracting when you're trying to drive. I don't agree with putting a winter's farmer's market on Central Street. I think that that's a waste of money, myself. Um, I know that some of the costs here are kind of ridiculous. Seven hundred and fifty dollars for, for a bale of hay and blankets, I mean. I wouldn't be able to support it with that in there, so if, if that rider wasn't in there, I might be able to support this, but I wouldn't support it with that in there, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? I just, uh. Go ahead, Council Dow.
Thank you, uh, through you. Uh, Council Marquetti, this is a, a grant, it's not like it's costing the town anything. I think we should take the advantage off of it. Not, not, uh, decline any grant coming, doesn't matter where in town, to prove any, this is my opinion, uh. You know, but this is, uh, you know, hopefully free money, we got approved for it, so I'm not sure why we're gonna decline that, you know, thank you.
Well, if I could reply.
Go ahead, Council Marquetti.
Well, I've always felt that if it's a waste of money, it's a waste of money, no matter where it's coming from. Thank you.
Thank you, um. Peg, uh, in regards to those items that he, uh, Council Marquetti, um, reported on, uh, farmer's market, I mean, in wintertime. If we're talking winter, maybe during the winter months, there are some stretches during winter months that, uh, you could accommodate some type. Outdoor farmer's market or some type of market, even though we call it a farmer's market, is that correct?
Correct, uh, it's not guaranteed to be a farmer's market, we're just, um, trying to, um. Gain feedback from the community, for instance, through the SVP, the Southbridge Business Partnership and through the redevelopment authority. Uh, there were discussions about a potential market, uh, I will be, uh, at the next farmers, uh, excuse me, the next Agriculture Commission. To talk to, uh, them about whether they'd be interested in, uh, bringing the, the farmer's market at all over to the Central Street Plaza. Um, the idea is to promote, uh, new, uh, whether that is bringing over some of the farmer's market, whether i- if they choose to want to adopt that space. Or whether it's, um, trying to create some kind of, um, uh, retail that we haven't seen in the downtown. You wanna really draw people to this new pedestrian plaza that you've built, you've invested, you know, the one point two million dollars, the ideal would be obviously to now. Uh, have attractions, and so, uh, for instance, the idea of, uh, trying to create this outdoor winter space. Is an agenda of the states to be able to try to, uh, get through the worst of, uh, the winter months. Uh, rather than having people indoors, you promote them outdoors, what a wonderful way to then introduce them to this new pedestrian plaza that you've invested in. Uh, and then, uh, with regards to the specific items, what we were advised by, uh, from the state was. Uh, make sure that you budget higher than you need because you cannot come back. Um, if for some reason there is excess funds, you're allowed to use it within the scope of the, the grant purpose. Um, so we, we could be able to potentially, um, you know, adjust that budget if it was excessive. But for instance, if you look at something like a hay bale, um, I had, uh, I have scoped out for, uh, ten stalls. For three bales of hay at each stall, and then for two blankets, uh, with the bales. And that allows for, obviously, someone who's sitting in retail space to have something to sit on or some, you know, just a way to. To change up their staging a little bit, um, a lot of this is, you know, on-the-fly creativity, we're really just trying to infuse a new idea into the town. I understand it can be a little off-putting when you see those kinds of dollars, but if you wanna see it done right, I feel like you really, um, you don't wanna short-change yourselves. If you've got this opportunity in front of you, i- if the state, as I've mentioned, um, if they decide that that funding is excessive. Or if it's out of the scope of what they're choosing to fund, they may not, and they may just give you a partial funded award of. Maybe, you know, less of the shared street, streets, um, and so what I would ask is that you, um, you know, if you would consider the full motion to. Ask for the entire request and we see what the state's response is, um, it could be a wonderful opportunity for the town.
Thank you, any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, Council Adams.
Go ahead, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I'm gonna agree with Council Dow about the grant money, it's either we. Go out there and try to figure out how to utilize this money in the best way we can, or another town's gonna use it for themselves. Um, when it comes to the flashing beacons, one of those flashing beacons, pedestrian signs is going over at the old tag where you, we're going from, uh. Teresa to Maria Ave, now talking to Chief Woodson. There's been multiple residents over his, 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 uh, his time as the chief and as a police officer. Where they have asked and begged for, um, something exactly like this, this grant provides that, and, and I fully support it. Another thing is, it's just not a farmer's market, so like Miss Dean had mentioned, we can utilize this stuff during the spring, the fall, the summer. Just, just as well as during the wintertime, um. I will say, I hope the agriculture commission, if this goes through, supports this. So they can set up and support small businesses throughout our town. Again, our town is a walking town, and so if you set up a farmer's market, craft fair, you have, um, cultural events and stuff like that. Within this beautiful Central Street parking lot that we just spent all this money on, I think it goes a long way for our community. It also hopefully will fill up that Main Street, um, that supposedly is, uh, filled with a bunch of cars that we can put, uh. Um, meters on, so hopefully that may come true one day, but it's supporting small businesses. And the fact that these shared streets have been out here before and we've never even applied for. That just amazed me that we didn't apply for these for this town, so I, I appreciate what Miss Dean has done for that community, that area alone. But this is just not just something that's so small that, you know, bale of hay, this, this talks about all kinds of things within our town. From our crosswalks to flashing beacons, to farmer's markets, to craft fair, it brings a heck of a lot of, uh, of good stuff back to our town, so I fully support this, thank you.
Thank you, Council, Council Lazo?
Yeah, um, I'm not disagreeing with, uh, the previous speaker, Council Marquetti. Um, there are grants that are written in a certain way that I do not agree with. But, um, if I can just use Putnam as an example. It was kind of a rundown area at one point, and I used to go to Putnam. And, um, they came up with some daring ideas. Um, some people thought it was foolish, some didn't like what they were gonna do. And all of a sudden, Putnam is a booming area with antique shops and restaurants and various. They just revitalized a bad portion of their town that was rundown, old, you know, buildings. So, for me, I'm, I've been around a while in government and I've seen these grants and I'm not. Uh, disagreeing with Marquetti as much as I think we need to get daring. And as, uh, Council Adams says, let's take a shot at this, we have nothing to lose here. Um, if you're gonna lose a few dollars in a grant that we probably don't agree with, let it ride on its own merits. I think Southbridge has had a unique situation here, when you look at the globe. With the marijuana, uh, reconfiguration of parking lots and various things happening down at the globe. The economic development seems to look brighter today than it did when I got on the council. And I think that the downtown area, as much as I've always said that was the parking lot from hell, and I still believe that. And Marquetti and I always agreed on a lot of things on that parking lot, but we have this parking lot. And I think we need to get a little daring, over the years, we've done tremendous amount of downtown partnership, downtown studies. They said we need a bed and breakfast, we need this, we need that, we're at a point where I think we need to get daring. I think the American Optical, Mary Wells, road construction, the globe, a lot of stuff's happening in Southbridge. I'm supportive of this, uh, this grant, and I'm supportive of the Economic Development, uh, Department. Uh, and also Dave Adams, who puts a tremendous amount of time into it. Do I agree with everything they say? No. But on this one here, let's get daring counselors, let's put it out there, let's go for it and get a bite of the apple. I think it's, uh, I think there's potential, no guarantees, but I think there's potential behind this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lazo, Council Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, uh, just so the people at home know, uh, what it is we're talking about in terms of crossing beacons. There are five locations in town that are mentioned in this grant in terms of where the crossing beacons would be going. And as you all are aware, uh, these are particularly dangerous areas, we're talking Dresser Park on Main Street. We're talking Morris Street at East Main, we're talking Capello. We're talking Morris Street at East Main. We're talking Capello Park in Central Street. We're talking Charlton Street School. And we're talking Eastern Road School. And. Um, in Tag, the Lebanon, uh, Housing Authority, and, um. I think that right there, that grant serves the purpose. In terms of the Central Street parking lot. For years, everyone's been saying, what can we do? What can we do? What can we do? Well, someone's come up with an idea, and I think it's time to say, let's run with it. So I'm definitely in support of this grant application in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Daniel. Any other councils?
I would just like to add one thing, if I might.
Go ahead, Council Marquetti.
Uh, like I said, I, I'm not opposed to the, uh, crosswalk improvements. I know that we need that. But, uh, the Central Street parking lot, first of all, we, we lost parking spaces there with this. Whatever they're doing there. We had more parking places there than we do now. So you put something, a farmer's market there, I don't know who's. Where are they gonna park? But what I'd rather see the money go for is things that we really need in town. We need sidewalks fixed. This is for walkable Southbridge. Yeah, that it's very difficult to walk in Southbridge because a lot of the sidewalks are not in good shape. So I would rather see the money go for that. I'm not opposed to the, to the crosswalks. I think that's a great idea, but the, the parking lot, take that rider off of this. And I would be fine with it. That's all. Thank you. I really want to keep going on this. I just, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Miss Dean?
Uh, if I could just respond to the sidewalks, the scope of the, the grant stated that you had to improve sidewalks. We did look into. Heather's first request was to be able to pursue sidewalk improvements, but their definition of improving means to find creative solutions for. Uh, multimodal such as, um, sharing with bicycles or somehow, um, it tremendously changing the sidewalks. Uh, so what we did look into, uh, was brought up at our subcommittee meeting that we weren't spending up to the five hundred thousand dollar limit. We went back to the state. We asked them if we could potentially put in sidewalks on Morris where Council Marquetti's been requesting sidewalks. And unfortunately, the grant is only good for up to three hundred thousand unless you're doing a bus project. Uh, then you get up into the five hundred thousand. And so, uh, the, the Morris Street sidewalks. Could have been considered as an alternate project alone, but I think the breadth of the choices of the projects that are here. Reach the, the farthest amount you can into the community, uh, and also the timeline to finish the project. And they felt like the, the, the highway department, or Heather, felt like the rapid flashing beacons could be installed within the small window of time.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Peg, for the hard work on that. I know, as a council, since, uh, I, I got on council with Council Adams. We've been talking about the shared streets, the, uh, all the, uh, grants out there. So thank you for reaching out and finding this grant. I, I think you found it really at the last minute there, from what I remember in a previous brief, uh, that was still available to us. So thank you for reaching that out. Um, I think to, uh, to Council Alzo's point, uh, we have to have a balanced approach. I mean, we have our capital budgets. Our regular, uh, uh, the regular budgets, uh, and also economic development. And the best way to do that is to mingle all these types of grants. Um, together to better whatever we can put out to increase our footprint for businesses to come back into town. So, uh, I think we've done a pretty good job of working on some of the pavement projects, and we'll look forward to the pavement management. Presentation of how we're gonna fund that. We work within our capital budget. I, Council Adams and I, I remember at a budget meeting, uh, two years ago. Uh, talked about giving more money to the DPW and transferring more money, uh, that was gonna go to stabilization to, to put sidewalks in. And at that point, it was, uh, that, uh, there was plenty of money that, or there was money that had already put aside that hadn't been, uh, spent yet. So it comes to the approach that we take as a council to prioritize, uh, and balance all the grants, uh, and put the needs in place. To make it a better, better, uh, spot for all. Uh, and a grant is a better, uh, a good way to, uh, help promote economic development. So kudos for, for thinking about that. I, I do get the thought about, you know, particular items. We could, we could sit in. Some of these things and say how, how expensive they are. Um, so let them get the cost. They put a budget item in and, uh, let's not be short sighted. So thank you, uh, Council Alzo, for, for those words. Uh, Council Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, uh, and great work again, Peg. Um, much appreciated what you've put into this. And I certainly support it. Just a quick question, could this be, could any of these monies be utilized for the rail trail, for the bike trail? That we, that we have in town to help promote bringing people into town?
I, uh, I wonder if it could. I, as one of my initial ideas. I thought maybe you could get a, a short term agreement with Mast dot to upgrade, uh, the section that runs through the downtown. As a way to create that as a visible project and revitalize the bike trail. Um, but I let that go quickly because Eric and I talked through a lot of the complications and we started digging. Uh, we've been talking to Heather, we talked to the previous engineer on the project, uh, and we're starting to, um. Look at the full history of the rail trail. We put that aside and we are instead looking at where the rail trail left off. And what we can recommend to the, uh, town managers, maybe a next step to revitalize that project.
Thank you. Again, I, I certainly do support this. I would like to see something in the works for the, for the rail trail, the bike trail. Um, I, I know other communities that have them, and it does bring a lot into the, the, the local towns and cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I'm sure we could revisit the rail trail. Uh, we had extensive conversations when I first got on council about the rail trail. We had a million dollars set aside to that. Unfortunately, uh, we won't get into all that. But I think, uh, we could circle back to see where the rail trail stands, uh, and have an update as to what Mast DOT did. With the bulk of that million dollars, because I think a lot of that went to, uh, stabilization of a section of that rail trail. Um, there was a lot more to that rail trail that we'll save for another meeting based on conversations that we had with, uh. Liability and DOT's requirements on the town of Southbridge that they weren't putting on any other municipality, if I recall. But we'll, we can circle back on that, Council Katrona, on that. Uh, because, yeah, they, they would be viable, but, um. We'll bring you up to speed on the conversations that we had on that rail trail because it was, uh, quite extensive.
Thank you.
Council Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just not to belabor this, but I know, uh, Ms. Dean has already reached out to me. We've already kind of discussed the past history of, of that whole thing. Uh, just to, Council Katrona, um, this is something that, um, I, I obviously support with you on that. And, um, I, I think, uh, once they come up with a, a better idea than what maybe we received before. Uh, maybe we can move forward with some things, but I, I completely support where you're coming from on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Dow.
Yes.
Council Jovan.
Yes.
Council Alzo.
Yes.
Council Marquetti.
No.
Council Ryan.
Yes.
Council Steves.
Yes.
Council Adams.
Yes.
Council Katrona.
Yes.
And Council Daniel.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. I'm thirteen. Vote to approve the urban agenda grant application to promote economic development. In the urban renewal area in the amount of seventy two thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
No.
Second.
Motion second, uh, Council, uh, Adams.
Thanks, Chair. Went through P and D on the eighth of December, and I'll pass it on to, uh, Ms. Dean for further discussion. Thank you. If you don't mind. Sorry.
Hi, thank you so much for taking these agenda items. Uh, all of these came up very quickly. They are all in the vein of helping respond to COVID. Uh, their intentions are, uh, with the shared street, the walkability and the safety of the town while, uh, encouraging new commerce. The planning grants are, um, the next two agenda items similar. One is for, uh, planning in, uh, cities where you want to also try to promote inclusion. According to, uh, there's a, a black commission at the state level that had an agenda. They suggested, um, try to res- respond to that. Uh, agenda within your urban agenda grant. There's also a Latinx, uh, commission that would like to see, uh, their agenda items. Uh, in, in the, in the grant. So the urban agenda is for planning and for programming. The goal would be to jumpstart the redevelopment authority. Uh, I, uh, witnessed for, uh, some time. A, a bit of inaction on the staff's part from the, uh, for the redevelopment authority. I felt like there were ideas that were. Uh, suggested, entertained, and then, uh, we moved on or we circled back. And there was a lot of. And, uh, unfortunate, uh, it felt like stalling. And I feel like the town needs a consultant to come in and help them with their next steps. What would be the, the best move? If they were to consider a major update to the urban renewal plan. According to VHP, it can cost anywhere between a hundred twenty and a hundred forty thousand dollars. So I don't, uh, I don't want to. Uh, hire a consultant to tell me whether or not we need to spend that money. I want to hire a consultant to tell us what our next steps are. Where they have no, uh, incentive to want to, uh, charge us the most to update our plan. There's a chance that we could just update the, uh, re- the redevelopment authority could update their, uh, urban renewal plan. With a minor amendment, which might only cost a few thousand, maybe forty thousand dollars, relatively speaking. Uh, there may be items within the urban renewal plan that could be, um, that could be pursued immediately. But we need expertise to come in and really educate the redevelopment authority, educate myself, educate, uh, you know, Eric. All of us, maybe the town council was interested in learning what the next options might be. Um, and then from there, there's also an option to, um, hire programming. So I wanted to be able to spend money on culturally inclusive programming at the Central Street parking lot, um, as part of the grant. So all of that is in the vein of, uh, economic development with the overarching goal of being able to promote inclusion in the downtown. The redevelopment authority's goal would be along that same vein also. Um, the, uh. Extra two thousand dollars I have as a stipend is also to be able to hire an intern. I'd reached out to MIT last year. But the director at that time was not interested in going this direction. Um, and so I would love to be able to see, uh, you know, fresh ideas be introduced to the town. Through, uh, an avenue like that as well. Uh, I don't know what, how good of a chance we have with this grant. I have a call with the, uh, the grant overseer tomorrow morning, and I'll get a better temperature. The, in the meantime, I've spoken with the state on, on this. They all think it's a great idea, what we're considering. They think it's a great next step, but they're not sure whether we'll be able to be awarded. They are highly recommending that in the meantime. We also go for the next agenda item, that local rapid recovery planning, should we not be awarded the urban agenda. So I'm casting the net, um, and I'm seeing, you know, could these planning grants potentially help our redevelopment authority get up and going?
Thank you, uh, Miss Dean. Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything to add?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman, other than I, you know, I've been in communication with Ms. Dean about these and. Uh, again, we are looking for any opportunity to secure funding to help improve downtown and economic. Development and growth within the community as well as the redevelopment authority. So, uh, I'm supportive of her efforts. And I, I think we can benefit from the results.
Thank you. Uh, Council Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. So the, the biggest portion of this is possibly hiring, if we get this grant. A consultant for the redevelopment authority. Um, I ran some five years ago, uh, on the re- redevelopment authority. Um, and the only thing that has been accomplished so far, if anything, was, was really getting the Central Street parking lot, uh, kind of pushed forward. Uh, I've said it before, the redevelopment authority is probably the most underutilized board that we actually have in this town. With the authority that they actually have, where they can work hand in hand, and then sometimes singularly by themselves. Uh, with the town council. A- and we, we discussed this last year, how, uh. Inspector's office had like five hundred thousand dollars i- in funds to knock down buildings and, and do other things, board them up. This is what the redevelopment authority is allowed to work on as long as it, as long as it's in their scope, in their areas. This is another tool to our town. If this consultant could come in here and actually teach us something, uh, uh, and set up a plan for us to actually. Utilize this redevelopment authority to our benefit. That's one area we don't have to worry about because they can move from one place to another place to another place. We went to a town a few years ago where the redevelopment authority, though they received their funds through a brownfield issue. That they're out there, they found like a theater that was, um, blinded. It was, it was being run down. They took it over. By Inno Domain, I believe, and, and they reworked it, remodeled it, resold it to somewhere else. And they, that's how the process will work as long as they have seed money and they can continue to move from one project to another. This fifty thousand dollars will go a long way if we actually figure out what the redevelopment authority can and cannot do. Educate the town employees as well. I can't tell you how many times I had gone downstairs and talked about the redevelopment authority. And, and the purposes in life, and what's the plan, and how do we move forward, and all that kind of stuff, and all I being pushed back because. Um, maybe it was a little bit more difficult. I don't know what it is. Ms. Dean is taking this on herself to do this and find this grant out there. If we can get this money, and it helps the town a little bit to educate us from the town manager to the, uh, CDVG coordinator to. To, uh, the redevelopment authority itself, maybe we, we, we got a, a good board that's really gonna help this town out. It's not gonna start, it's not gonna finish everything that we, uh, have issues overnight, but it's a stepping stone. It's a stepping process. And by finding this grant, I think it'll, it's a win-win if we can get this. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, uh, Alzo.
Yeah, just a quick comment. Uh, people talk about the redevelopment authority. I don't think anybody really knows the power that the redevelopment authority has. I agree with Council Adams. When you talk about projects, I think where we're weak as a community. Is the project management of creating the team on planning. And I think like, when you look at the redevelopment authority, you look at Peg Dean's office, you look at the planning board. It's almost like a planning team that has then connect the dots to make all of these boards and commissions work hand in hand. And if it's gonna take some grant money, there's never a bad grant. They're not all written perfect, and they're basically controlled by the feds or the state. On what the regulations are gonna be and where they're earmarked. But I think we're on the right track at Southbridge. It's been a while since we, since I felt like we were on the right track in putting this team together. Peg, uh, to your. Kudos to you on a full court press on trying to get these dollars. Uh, long overdue. But, uh, I think, I think we're heading in the right direction. And the council is an intricate part of this team of connecting those dots. By supporting these grants, by moving forward in some of these projects. The projects, I mean, and again. We just came off a project, if I may say, probably wasn't the smoothest project done in the town of Southbridge. But it got completed, and it was a mop up, uh, and a cleanup of, uh, somebody else's work. And I think Peg Dean and, and then, and the, uh, Planning and Development Subcommittee got it done. So here we are, we're at a crossroad, uh, and I think we need to support Peg Dean and, and these grants. To continue to move forward, to try and get this planning team, to get these projects lined up, prioritized. We have a role as a council, and I think we're gonna do this. Uh, I just think that we, we need to talk, communicate. I think, uh, Council Adams does a fine job planning a development subcommittee, and, um, I think the town sees a lot of things going on right now. I'm not sure everybody understands how it works, but I think that we have the ability through the redevelopment authority, planning board. Planning and Development Subcommittee, Peg Dean, we're heading in the right direction, Yang. Let's not stop now. Let's keep moving forward.
Thank you, Council. Council Alzo. Council Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, I first want to thank Peg Dean. This is a wonderful initiative. Uh, for the town to be taking, and I'm particularly impressed that we're working on to help be inclusive about it. By addressing the needs of Latinx and black communities, and I appreciate your leadership on that. And I also want to thank Council Adams. Uh, Council Adams has been, like you said, advocating for this for a long while. And getting the redevelopment authority up and running, and I think this is a wonderful first step. And if we do get this grant, I think it'll be putting Southbridge in a really good position as, uh, Council Alzo was just saying. Saying, so great work, everybody, and hopefully it turns out well for us.
Thank you, Council Ryan. Any other councils? Council Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Uh, when I look at this grant, I look at it just replacing Rosemary Scrivens. That's what this is doing. And I thought we weren't going to do that. Um, well, before everybody starts beating up on me. I, I'm not opposed to getting these grants, but I think that this could be work, this could be used better. I, I don't have a problem with Ms. Dean going out and finding grants. I think that's great. That's what she, her job is. I wish she would do more consulting with the town. I wish she would do more consulting with the town council because I think we know what we need in this town. We have some major things that we have to pay for. We need roads, we need curbside, we need a new fire station, and I want to see more grants. This, I would value the money to go right to the redevelopment authority and not just hire another Rosemary Scrivens. I, I just don't, I don't see the reason for that personally, but that's all. Thank you very much.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's not beating up on Counselor McKitty because I completely agree that after the four months of you, if, if we were to receive this grant, that after four months or whatever that due date is, that that person has to leave and shouldn't be going back to the taxpayer to fund or pay for Ms. Scrivens' position in the past. I completely agree with that. But if this consultant could come in here and actually educate the town manager, Ms. Dean, Eric, and quite a few other people, because I got to tell you, the redevelopment authority needs educating. And I just don't, and it's not, not their fault. It's just been pushed to the side for so long that, you know, maybe it's finally come to a forefront. But that consultant to me is a consultant, hire him, bring him in here, give us the education, give us the classes, give us hopefully a possible plan, and then move on with our lives and that person can move on with theirs. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lazo?
I will not beat up Counselor McKitty. He's one hundred percent right. I'm not a big fan of consultants. And we did enough studies in this town in the last ten, fifteen years, which was all supposed to help Southbridge. The thing that I'm seeing right now is we're connecting the dots between all of these boards and commissions in the council. I agree with Counselor McKitty on, on, on many things with this development. We, we have projects. What is the priority? Communicate with the council on what the priority is. We should set the priority, not the economic development group. But as a team, the head on the horse is the elected body, the council. And I think what happens is I think we're getting there and that's why I'm supportive of Peg Dean. She's the one that played mop up on the Central Street parking lot. Let's not make any boos about this. We had a failed person in a position. Don't get mad at the position when the person was incompetent in the position. And I won't mention anybody's names. But when you have Peg Dean in the back batting cleanup and she cleaned it up and completed it and we moved on. I think Counselor McKitty shares, I share his frustration. But I also share a vision of what Mr. Adams is saying. Counselor Adams puts a lot of time in and I know that we have good people and we've had some not so good people. But I just can't put a vehicle in reverse because of one bad apple. I think the vision for the town is moving in the right direction. I, I do agree that you should talk to the council. Peg, I'm very supportive of you and that department. And I think that the better we communicate as counselors and development, economic development group, I think we could really hit some grand slams here. I think that if the left hand knows what the right hand's doing and the boards and commissions that have to be utilized through these projects, that's what redevelopment is about. Because police is going to come in, fire, council, it's one big team trying to move this community forward for economic development. We have not been very successful on drawing business into town. We have had some leave town. But I think that we can't quit on the town of Southbridge. I know I'm not ready to. And we will continue to get these grants. And, and, and again, there is no perfect grant. I've read some of these grants. It's built bureaucracy from the top, the state and the feds. But again, we looked at it as free money, but it is our dollars, taxpayers' money that creates the grants. And I think that we have to continue to work on this. We can't quit on, on Southbridge. I think we're heading in the right direction. Let's just keep working at this and keep pounding the steel, as we say, until we get this shaped into what we want to be when we grow up as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lazo. Peg, just one thing, looking at the proposed project, you know, you have a little segment here, program for gateway cities designed to accelerate economic growth within focused districts, which looks to strengthen cross-sector partnerships to further community-driven development. Does this go hand in hand with the recent public hearing that we had for the proposed overlay districts? Does that help facilitate that as well? Because it's a focused district or is that part of something they would look at?
We could have focused on that overlay district over at the AO or the overlay district. I, the language here is the, the program that the state has in place for gateway cities that I am trying to model. So it's the state's transformative development initiative, local technical assistance grant, which Southbridge has never been eligible for because you fall right under the size of a gateway city. You're what would probably be defined as a mini gateway. And the gateway cities have lots of specific agenda, specific grants tailored to their communities or specific funds tailored to their communities to help them. You miss out on those opportunities. And when I'd heard about this program, I thought that's what, that's what Southbridge's redevelopment authority needs. But unfortunately, you've never been eligible. So when I saw these funds, I thought maybe we can reinvent the wheel a little bit by taking the funds and hiring ourselves.
No, that sounds great. I mean, I'm not opposed to it at all. And again, to echo my fellow counselors, kudos for grant opportunities to better Southbridge. So without it, you continue to just plug away and try to do the best you can. Any little additional assistance helps to better Southbridge. So thank you for looking for that. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor McKitty?
No.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
And Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item fourteen, vote to apply for local rapid recovery planning grant designed to address existing downtown issues. Is there a motion?
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Lazo, second by Counselor Ryan. Counselor Adams, you have anything?
I just wanted to let everybody know that it was voted on four zero favorably to move forward to the town council.
Thank you. Ms. Dean, do you have anything else to add on that one? I know you explained it pretty much with the other one, but.
This would be no exchange of funds. And so the state would hire a consultant on our behalf. And it would be just a fraction of what the urban agenda goal would be. It would, the state has promised us though, that they could work directly with the redevelopment authority. And so they would participate in this planning exercise over the next few months to come up with next steps to help us with COVID.
Thank you. Counselor McKitty, you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Local rapid recovery. So we're going to hire a consultant and that's local rapid recovery. I would wish somebody would tell the state, we need funds to fix our roads. We need money to fix our fire station. We don't need another consultant. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just want to state for the record, I, I know counselors on this, sitting council and former council have reached out to our state representatives asking and helping. We scheduled a meeting at your request on Mill Street to have state representative and state senator come to talk about money to get a bridge, which state Senator Fatman and Representative Durant and the town manager helped facilitate that. They came there to speak to us and meet with us. Counselor Adams was there and myself and worked with the state to say, hey, we need some money for this bridge. So it's, we are looking for those monies as well through the town side. And I'm sure other councils have reached out to representatives. So you have to have, to me personally, you have to have a multi-pronged approach to address the needs of the town. Mr. Counselor Lazo?
Yeah, I mean, this council has been probably more driven by roads and sidewalks than most councils of the past. I know I came up with a suggestion. I know it's been kicked around. The marijuana dispensaries and the taxation that goes on them. It's money that we don't have. And we've always said, geez, why don't we airmark the marijuana money to the sidewalks and roads? As a government, we can sit here and say, we could create a cash flow on an annual basis that would give you the planning and development of your roads and sidewalks. And I know the town manager, I, I give him kudos of looking into this. We as a council have to have, as the chairman has said, a multi-pronged approach. It can't be all grant. We have an opportunity with these dispensaries and a new cash flow into the community. And we could utilize that. But we as a council have to prioritize, what do you want to do? I don't want to use the marijuana money raises or doing anything like that. I want to airmarket capital improvement of the roads and sidewalks or something on that line where we could take care of some shortfalls in some areas. But what happens is we had a landfill, probably one of the biggest landfills around. And in the end, when we're closing our landfill, what did we get for the money that we used on our landfill? I don't think we earmarked enough of that landfill money over the years to take care of some things like maybe a fire station upgrades or, or things like sidewalks or even fire apparatus. All the other communities you see do things like this, end up with different types of assets through their assets. And I think that we're at a crossroad now where we have a new form of income. And I think that this town manager is a different town manager. This guy's not going to let incompetency ferment in our planning and development or in our planning of our community. I, I am very optimistic with this gentleman. He's doing a very aggressive job with accountability and oversight. And again, multi-pronged approach. There's no one income. If Peg Dean is, is pushing the envelope on a full court press on grants and then we have our planning board, which I, I wanted to talk to about under Counselors Forum, they push things forward as, as another branch of Southbridge moving forward, generating income and for a brighter future of Southbridge. We are the counselors. We need to set the, the pace, the long-term goals to get things done. And then the team underneath, which is a supporting cast, department, it's DPW, police, fire. We need everybody in the box when we move forward on some of these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Adams, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, I just wanted to, I know it's not off, it's kind of off the agenda, but I agree with Counselor Lazo about the canvas money down the road. But I wanted to just, Counselor Dow was there as well and I didn't know if he had mentioned the.
Oh yeah, Counselor Dow came afterwards, yes. Sorry, Counselor Dow. I apologize. Yes, you were there as well. Thank you.
I didn't want any feelings hurt there, Mr. Chairman.
No, definitely. I don't want to. Mr. Town Manager, did you have anything else?
No, I'm Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor McKitty?
No.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
And Counselor Jovan?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Counselor Adams for bringing that to my attention. I don't want to slight Counsel Dow because I think I did that at another event. So my apologies, I I fully recognize my friend. All right. Item fifteen, vote to approve the contract for consultant engineering services for the registry motor vehicle HVAC upgrade to commercial construction consultant incorporated in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Is there a motion? I get a motion by Counselor Lazo, second by Counselor Ryan. DPW, does this go through? No? All right. I think it came directly. I'll go to Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I hand it over to Ms. Blakely, DPW, as you know, we're trying to work with the RMB to secure our new ten-year lease. And one of the requirements that they had from us was that we had to bring our HVAC system up to code or at least up to the DP, Department of Public Health requirements for the adequate exchange of fresh air. So that required us to go out and look at the HVAC system. I'm sure Ms. Blakely can explain better than I that we, we did consult several local HVAC contractors and they came out and looked at it and then it was determined that we, this was going to be more than they could handle. So we were going to have to go up for a full solicitation of bids, which was going to require a scope of work. And that's where we are today. But the one good thing that everyone needs to know is this is something that we put in a request for COVID monies for CARES Act money. And so we were authorized the ten thousand dollars. Ms. Blakely did put this out, I believe, to five different firms and only one responded favorably. And at this point, I can hand it over to Ms. Blakely and she can tell you and answer any questions you may have about.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wagon?
Yes. So we had contacted, we had gotten some budgetary estimates for different upgrades that could be done at the RMB. After having the RMB actually come on site, what they were looking for was a little bit more extensive than what we originally thought we could do and what we had gotten base quotes for. And I only got a quote from one vendor and it was completely budgetary. It wasn't even prevailing wages. So there wasn't any way that we could just move forward just with that one quote that we had. Multiple people did take a look at the building. It is a little complicated what they're looking at doing. So we moved forward when we realized that the council was indeed in favor of trying to renegotiate the lease and that this is one of the conditions of that renegotiation, that we needed to provide, bring in some experts to try to figure out the best way to do the air exchange that's required and that they will agree with what we have. The state will, basically, we have an engineer back it up with design plans saying that it is meeting the requirements. And that gives us that ability to say, yes, here it is. Here's what we're doing. We're going to do this. Plus, we have the access to the CARES money. So we did receive, I did reach out to multiple mechanical engineering vendors to try to get some quotes from them, sent them the, the plans of the building, told them that I'd meet them at the building to come see it. The vendor that did actually bid on it did, is the only vendor that actually met me at the building. Another one had me take some photos and send them to them. But yes, we had a very aggressive timeframe, but that's partially because of CARES money. There's some, we have to get this moving so that we can have access to that money. So that would be why we brought it directly to council to try to, we couldn't really wait to the, and the start of the next year, so.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor McKitty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Believe me, I would like to see the RMB opened up again because the day that you were doing your bridge visit, I was at the RMB in Worcester, so I couldn't make it. It's really a pain to go to Worcester. The only thing I just, a few questions is, is the RMB committed to coming back if we, if we spend the money on this?
Town Manager?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, through you to Counselor McKitty. The way it was left with my last conversation with the representative from Mass DOT, he, we confirmed in an email that provided that the town of Southbridge is committed to going forward and making the improvements that they would work with us to get a lease secured for the RMB here in the community. Now, we didn't discuss terms, but I've talked with our representatives. They're also going to put some pressure on. We are seeking a long-term lease, the order of the ten years before. Initially, they were saying just to extend this for a short-term lease, we still had to make the improvements. But what we're hoping to do is make the commitment, get it here for the short term, but convince them that it is a long-term lease that we need and it's in their best interest to do it. I've heard from numerous people, including former counselors and the history. I'm well aware of the efforts that were made to, to keep this here the last time and we're committed to doing that going forward.
Okay, thank you. And if I can continue, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Counselor McKitty.
So we're the full tenth, first of all, what? It kind of confuses me. We need an engineer to design air conditioning in a building. Usually, well, you just call up Wyndham County and they come, they come over and they, okay.
This is not an air con. This isn't, first of all, you're misspoken when you're speaking there's air conditioning. This is actually talking about bringing in fresh air and the air exchanges in the building. It will be heated space and cooled space air exchanges, not air cooling or air heat. It's about bringing the fresh air in. And it, there's, it's a very, it's a multiple step calculation. And the state is the one who is requiring us not just to bring a vendor in and install something. And the state is the one who is requiring us not just to bring a vendor in and install something. They want to see that it's going to meet the requirements of the Mass DPH.
Okay, thank you. I I did not know that. Thank you very much. And, uh, the entire amount will be paid for through the CARES Act? Is that what you are saying? The entire $10,000 will be covered by the CARES money? Okay.
Can we apply for, yes?
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Council Lazo?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, uh, I'm going to be supporting this here tonight because again, as former counselors and many other people that worked on this, this is another iron in the fire for Southbridge to create a destination here, not only to provide some services to our community and the convenience, but to create a destiny where people come from all over the surrounding south central area to come to Southbridge. And then at that point there, it creates traffic, it creates a destination. And as we all know, when you go to a destination, you spend money. So I think it's going to be a a good thing for the town of Southbridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lazo. Any other questions, comments? Council Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, I'm going to support this, um, agenda item. I think we owe it to the citizens in town because they've been very good to us as a council, and they've been very, uh, very caring of the town itself, and I think we owe them this concession um, to try to to do the best we can to get the RMV back in town. Um, I do caution the town manager, though, that, you know, 10 or 11 years ago, based upon what comments I've heard from previous councils, uh, they stuck it to a businessman in town, and they, uh, they almost stuck it to the town itself as well. Um, so I think, uh, you know, pulling out all the stops, making a full court press is definitely warranted in this situation uh, to try to do the best we can to get the RMV to stay in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Anybody else? Anyone else? Seeing done, roll call.
Council Marketti?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Steves?
Yes.
Council Adam?
Yes.
Council Catrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yeah.
Council Joe Van?
Yes.
And Council Lazo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item sixteen, vote to approve the contract to upgrade town's current website platform Civic CMS to Civic Engage in the amount of $18,500 for one-time design, development, training, and content migration costs. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second, motion by Council Lazo, second by Council Daniel, Mr. Town Manager?
Uh, again, Mr. Chairman, this was something that when we were putting together the requests for the second round of CARES Act money, we put on there. Um, this is IT related, and those items were being matched for CARES funding. So I had had some comments and questions about the the existing website and our ability to put certain things up on there in terms of notification and functionality. We have a, what's called, well, first of all, we we have a website which is supported by Civic Plus, which is one of the larger municipal, uh, website designers, I would say, in the area. A lot of communities use their platform. If you go look the various towns around, um, check who who in the bottom you'll see provided by. Oftentimes, it's Civic Plus, as I say, they're one of the larger providers. And they have, uh, several several different platforms, and they're really based on the size of the community. Um, the one that we have Civic CMS is geared toward smaller communities, and we really fall all right in the middle of the the range that they target, these two products to Civic Engage is for um, more medium-sized communities. It has a different functionality. The Civic CMS is for smaller communities closer to about a 10,000. And the the content and the navigation is much more, we'll we'll say canned. It's it's pre-designed and predetermined. You get a little more opportunity with the Civic Engage as well as you have the ability to more, you know, you can put more of your own content imagery. Uh, you can do different things in terms of the content delivery, uh, multiple banners on your your splash page, so to speak, so you could have multiple announcements scrolling across the top. Um, you can link that to some of your social media sites. You can, um, I think we could have the opportunity to tie it to our Everbridge system. I I used it in my past community. The only reason this came up, uh, when I was talking with the the company when I first got here, they said that at at some point we were, um, eligible for an upgrade and redesign at our existing level, which would cost uh, just under $8,000. Now, we could say, yes, our our website is adequate, um, but if we were in the next couple of years to spend um, $8,000, here we have the opportunity to spend money that is being provided us through CARES money. Um, if we elected to go this route, updated, we do pay an annual maintenance cost currently of about $3,800 for the existing platform. That dollar amount would go up roughly $600 a year, I think, to $4,400 uh, at the the next level. So although this upgrade would be paid for by CARES money, we would see an increase year over year of approximately $6,600 for the annual maintenance fee. So I, when Ms. Harnoyz was putting together this list, I put it on the list, it was approved. Um, it took a little time for Civic Plus to get back to me and to get me an appropriate statement of work in large part because other communities are taking advantage of CARES money, and they're all getting in the queue with Civic Plus to do similar upgrades of their websites. So that that's where we are, Mr. Chairman, and I'll entertain any questions.
Questions, comments? Council Steves? Go ahead, Council Steves.
Thank you very much. Um, I I think it's, I think we have in the past thrown around some ideas about needing to upgrade some of the things on our website. I remember we talked a while, a couple of weeks ago about having issues with some of the videos that we've, will, that are going to essentially disintegrate um, from the go-to-meeting platform if we don't transfer them over to our own website permanently. Um, so will this enable us to do that, to to preserve these kinds of videos permanently?
I I can't answer that question this time, Council Steves. I don't know enough about the, there's two different platforms, and we have to save it. You do have the ability. Currently, we can, anything that we put, there's a a document storage area uh, that we could archive, but that might be something better to be done with through Southbridge Community TV that they would archive those, and we could get a server. Um, if there's another round of CARES money, we can look for money for a server potentially to for the additional storage dedicated that way, and that might be something to consider. I'll make a note of.
That might be worth doing, thank you. Um, also, I was curious because I know I've looked at some of the websites, and unfortunately, the one that comes to mind specifically is Webster. They're a Civic Plus website. And unfortunately, I have found that their website is not exactly user-friendly in terms of finding things. You have to do a whole lot of jumping around to find anything that's stored there. I, our our website is actually a lot easier to use from a from a citizen's point of view right now. Um, I would like, if we want to do the upgrades, I have no idea with, I'm sorry, I have no problem with um, having more functionality so that we can post more stuff and have more interaction that way. Um, but I want to make sure that we have any changes will be easier for the community to get to things. I know, I know, having used Webster's website, and I, and I, as a reporter, I cover Webster fairly frequently. Um, trying to find documents on that website is a nightmare. I don't want our website to look like that. There's a, they have a ton of stuff there if you know where to find it, but it's not always easy to find. It's certainly not user-friendly. So I'd be concerned about that if that's typical of Civic Plus websites. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Council Adams, go ahead.
Just wanted to clarify, I believe with the go-to-meeting, you can push it out for a whole 12 months. Uh, you're recording, but you could also upload that and save it to your personal files as well. So I'm sure that, um, again, one's the website, the other one's the document side of the house as far as, uh, keeping it for archiving. So just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, uh, to Council Adams' point, I think we'll have to take a look at all those meetings before we lose them in March. Uh, because it's a one-year storage to get them saved into, even if it's a thumb drive or whatever, we can save them too. The town can have them at their disposal and upload them to a a network, uh, that they have. So we'll make sure that we're able to get those, uh, open in links and saved, so, uh, we'll see. Uh, any other questions, comments? Seeing done, roll call.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes, provided what I
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Catrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Joe Van?
Yes.
Council Lazo?
Yes.
Council Marketti?
No.
Motion carries. Um, item seventeen, discussion of town council services, proposals, and vote to appoint town council and special town council. Um, so this is, uh, before us, um, we had appointed our legal councils for a period of six months and then asked, I think the caveat was that, uh, when the new town manager came aboard, he'd have an opportunity to review our legal counsel, uh, what we use for various councils, um, and make a recommendation, uh, moving forward for the next six months. I know the town manager will probably touch on this, but I did get a copy of a letter, one of our legal councils right now. Uh, so this is an opportune moment for us to, um, transition for legal counsel or make a determination of how we want to proceed. Uh, as you're aware, De Moskis, uh, provides us services through Merrick O'Connell. Uh, I received a copy of the letter this week, uh, which indicated that De Moskis was leaving. Merrick O'Connell will no longer be with that firm and was leaving to join another firm as part of his partnership agreement. So in any event, De Moskis was, uh, pretty much the lead counsel for any labor issues that was utilized by the former town manager. So given that, it's an opportune moment for us to take a look at what, uh, the town manager has researched and how he wants to proceed with our, uh, legal counsel, at least for the next six months, uh, and see where we evaluate as we go over, uh, going forward. Uh, we've had a lot of conversations about legal counsel over the last couple of years. Um, and, uh, so this is an opportunity for us to take a look at that and what we do spend on legal services uh, and how we move forward in the best practice for the protect citizens in the town council. So with that, Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, what I did, obviously, for the, I've been here as of this week, uh, was three months now. Uh, I've had a chance to work with several different, uh, attorneys representing the town. And it's it's not unique in any given community that they may utilize more than one law firm, um, depending upon the nature of the work. I've been in other communities, uh, where they have, sometimes a small community may have one firm. Uh, but the days of having your own in-house counsel, uh, being able to address all issues facing community the size of Southbridge along the um, and so what what you're really looking for is, um, someone who can provide, provide you the breadth and depth and knowledge. Um, and if you can't get that from one firm, you might need more than one. So when I came here, I I found that we we have no less than a half dozen different attorneys that help us out in in various different areas. Uh, my last community had one primary firm, um, that did mostly municipal and labor and employment law. We did have a specialized land use council, and it's not uncommon for most communities to have special counsel for um, bond counsel and or tax title. Um, those are very specialized. You might find someone who will just handle those on the isolated issues you need. I I think where most people hone in on, um, are the general municipal law, labor, and employment. Um, what Southbridge has, which is different from my previous community, um, you you find yourself facing some housing issues, given the the makeup of, um, the the residential units, you have a lot of multifamily. I understand that Mr. Pelletier oftentimes, due to, uh, compliance issues, finds himself at the local district court. That's not something I experienced in my previous communities. And then you also have significantly more environmental, so you may need specialized environmental counsel. So when I asked our, some of our existing counsel, as well as KP Law, to provide me um, some proposals based on their fees, what their areas of specialization are, and those were included in your packet under, uh, item seventeen. I also, a- as you know, came to council last week because we had previous cable council um, that had contacted me at one point, didn't think that they could effectively represent the town. So I came to the council and I had asked KP Law to represent us there. I'm I'm aware that KP Law has also helped us, um, with some of our election laws. We also use Attorney Caprara to handle some, uh, some localized real estate transactions as well as he assists Mr. Pelletier in court. We've been using Merrick O'Connell for labor, uh, general municipal council services and environmental. Uh, we've had Need, Talamin, and Costa for our liquor licensing. Um, and we we have, as I said, some other specialized counsel for bond counsel and tax taking. Of the proposals before you, um, I've looked them over and then combined with the, uh, the letter that we received that Mr. Moskis is or Attorney Moskis is leaving, uh, that if we were to stay that route, we would be increasing the number of attorneys that we have, um, rather than consolidating. And, you know, consolidation versus multiple attorneys, um, you know, there's there's pros and cons to all. But my thought process after looking at it at all of this at this time, I would recommend to the council that I would be interested in keeping Attorney Caprara for handling some of the local issues that we have in housing court. Um, his his proposal is is located in there. Um, I would be interested, given the amount of time and effort in the job that Attorney McKay did for the landfill, uh, and the amount of time and effort it would take to bring a new law firm on that we keep Merrick O'Connell for our environmental counsel. Given the changes that, uh, uh, may take place with regard to the Labor and Employment Council, uh, I have worked closely in recent years with both Merrick O'Connell and KP Law, and most recently in my last uh, uh, employment with KP Law, where I did most of their, I did the labor negotiations, uh, and I utilized them a fair amount for litigation and municipal services. I would recommend that we utilize KP Law for general municipal labor and employment. Uh, I I had the opportunity, since I've been here, to work with Need, Talamin, and Costa. Uh, Adam Costa's been doing a a good job, an excellent job of working on the liquor issues. I wouldn't make any changes there. And and that pretty much sums up the only changes that I would recommend at this time, uh, Mr. Chairman, and I would be happy to entertain any questions, um. But other than, um, changing general municipal council, uh, in the labor employment, I would keep, uh, the representation at the same. And if if the council would be approving that, that would make KP Law or Council for election-related matters, cable licensing, general municipal, and labor and employment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Uh, questions of the town manager? Council Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, I'm glad to hear that, uh, you recommend keeping on Attorney Caprara. I think he's done well by the town for a number of years, and I think he's very aware of of what our issues are in town. And I'm I'm very happy to hear that. Um, in terms of our environmental work with Attorney McKay, I'm very impressed with him um, and his staff. I think he's done well by us as well. Um, so I have no problem with that recommendation. Do you feel, Mr. Manager, that there's going to be a built-in efficiency by going to KP Law?
Well, one of, in my experience, first of all, yes. Um, one thing that I've enjoyed with my relationship over the years is elected official and as administrative official or municipal official is is the breadth and depth of knowledge that, um, that KP provides. Um, they are one of the larger law firms. Um, the difficulty sometimes with some, my experience with smaller firms is there can be additional time taken for those people to come up to speed on a particular area. Uh, I'm not saying that the council we Uh, I'm not saying that the council we currently have is incompetent council. What I'm saying in my experience is I, I've got dedicated counsel that can hit the ground running when if I needed, when I called KP Law in the past. And I'm basing it apart on that as well as my experience, um, having done labor negotiations, having gone to the DLR for hearings with the KP Law, um, in, in other experience, just having them do, uh, litigation for land use matters as well. Maybe the fact that I work with them, uh, more frequently than some of the others over the years. I do know several of the, the members of, uh, Me Talman and Costa, I've worked with them individually in, in different professional settings. And likewise with Merrick O'Connell and we had them in my previous town as labor council as well. So I, I've worked with quite a few of them over the course of my career. Uh, I just have, uh, uh, my preference is KP Law.
Okay, Mr. Manager, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, it was definitely interesting kind of waiting through, uh, the very, very long presentation that missed the KP Law provided and much shorter documents that the other, the others sent us. Um, and I have had, obviously I would, I would agree with Counselor Daniel that we have got, I think we have gotten very good representation from Dave McKay. And as far as the environmental and landfill issues go, so I definitely want to keep him too. And, uh, from Rob Caprara, from the, from the more general stuff that we've had to deal with him from. Um, but I was curious about, I was curious about your, uh, some of the questions that came up. But I wish that some of those attorneys had been here that we can ask a couple of specific questions of them. Uh, maybe you can answer them from talking to them, Mr. McCall. Um, one thing I noticed looking through KP stuff and is, um, uh, you might be aware of the fact that we have, we had issues. Some, we had some concerns about, about the way they represented us, um, in the landfill negotiations back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. And I think Counselor McKitty could probably remember those too. Um, so, and I noticed that it made a passing reference to the fact that their management has changed. Um, I don't know if you had a chance to talk to them about that and what the changes might be like and how they, how they foresee, um, dealing with, um, Southridge's issues differently in, in those particular areas anyway. I mean, granted, our landfill will no longer exist, but so we won't have that as a concern, but.
So, uh, sorry. Mr. Chairman, if I may to Counselor Steve's, um, I, I did point that out to Attorney Lauren Goldberg, who's, uh, indicated she would be serving as, uh, co-primary counsel for the town on municipal matters. And I've known Attorney Goldberg for quite some time, um, when she served in, uh, similar capacity for the town of Chelmsford. When I was an elected official and when I was a, uh, assistant town manager there. Um, she was quick to point out that the firm is now called KP Law. It's no longer Copeland and Page because there's been essentially a sea change or a generational change where many of the attorneys that were there, um, back in two thousand and seven, eight, as you mentioned in that time period, uh, are no longer with the firm. There are some younger attorneys there, but they said that they, the representation and the style of representation is different. There are, uh, there are a couple of attorneys that are still there, such as Attorney Goldberg and John Giorgio, who I know and respect. I've worked with him, um, numerous times over the year. But they said it is essentially a different law firm than what you had, uh, ten years ago or more. But, um, again, my experiences have been much different in recent years with them. Uh, I could always offer the opportunity after hearing from me that if you want to, to bring some of these folks in, um, some communities bring them in, others just entertain the proposals. Uh, in this particular case, I just sought the proposals for each of them. I didn't think to, to put spokesman on for each of the, uh, the different firms.
Okay. Okay. Uh, one thing, and I think I probably know the answer to this. Uh, but I saw lots of references in the KP Law, um, the individuals who would possibly represent our town, um, to town meetings. Um, what kinds of experience do those individuals have that you're aware of with town council forms of government?
Um, I know that they have, as a firm, they've represented numerous communities throughout the Commonwealth that have both city and town forms of government. Um, I did not look specifically to that question for Attorneys Jenkins, um, Corbo and, um, Ms. Goldberg. But, um, if you need me to do further research, I'm willing to come back.
I, I could email you some of the questions I have, if you can get some answers from them, that'll be helpful. Thank you. Um, and also one more thing I, I, for them specifically is that, um, I saw several references to some experience with public-owned utilities. And I've in the past brought up the idea of whether we could see about starting some sort of municipal Brian Band or municipal energy systems. And I know that they've done a lot of work with those areas, but do they have much experience with starting such things? That would be a good thing to know too.
Yeah.
Um, oh, and one thing I think is also relevant for all of the people that, that we would possibly in, entertain as counsel, do they have people who speak Spanish? Cause we are a community that's what forty percent Spanish, so. And that might be a good thing to know if we need to deal with some of the people in our community. For some reason that they may have to go through our attorneys, they usually do not. Granted, because they, they're here, they're there to represent the town as a whole, but sometimes we have had counselors who are Spanish and so forth, so that's sometimes a useful thing to know. I suspect some of them do, but it didn't mention any of them specifically. Although I think Ms. Goldberg specifically mentioned something about getting a Span, uh, getting a Chinese language honorer, honor or some, something like that. Um, and, um, let's see. Oh, and one of the things that jumped out at me from Merrick O'Connell is that I know we, obviously we have dealt with Mr. Madouse and Mr. Moskis and Dean and, and Dave McKay about them for, for several years now. Um, but I thought it was interesting that it would jump out, what, what they specifically talked about mostly were their private non-municipal clients. As opposed to some of their, a lot of their municipal things, when they, when they cited specific cases that they had, their representative matters. They cited private cases, which actually kind of stood out to me. And I thought it was kind of disturbing actually, since they're representing, they're supposed to be representing municipalities. I wasn't aware of that, you had previously talked about. Although I don't know if that, I don't know if that would necessarily change how I would deal with, especially not with, with Dave McKay, cause he has shown himself to be a very competent lawyer and I like what he does.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and was there one more question ahead? Um, oh yeah, and also, um, with the, the Me Talman proposal actually specifically mentioned the potential of doing office hours at town hall. Um, and I was wondering, you had any thoughts on that? And if they, if we were to entertain doing that, how would you use such office hours?
Well, it's an interesting concept because really the, you know, that would be the opportunity for them to come in. We don't service the general public and we don't provide a public attorney, so I, you know, I find it interesting, other than they're there to answer general questions from either me, the staff or the council, I'm not sure how they would hold office hours. Um, I didn't get a chance to go back and ask that of Attorney Costa. But, um, generally, uh, my experience, you know, I, well, I haven't had an actual meeting in the chambers with you folks, but it's always been my experience, the council comes out to your meetings. And I believe that's probably what happened in the past with most of your meetings. And they're there for executive session and to handle, um, any questions that the council may have at that time. And that's always been my experience. I've never had office hours in the past with any particular firm or attorney with, with any municipality. So.
Different. Yeah, I've never seen anybody doing that either, so I thought that was interesting. Okay, thank you very much. That's all the questions I have.
Counselor Lazo?
Yeah, Gus brings up a counselor, Steve brings up, uh, an era back in, and I, when I say an era, I don't mean a mistake, in two thousand and eight. I wasn't directly involved with counsel, uh. I, I've had a tremendous amount of experience on school side with Merrick and O'Connell and Dean Moskis. Um, and I remember Copeland and Page. The council moved on away from Copeland and Page at one point to go to the School Systems Council. Um, I'm going to be honest with you, um, this town manager, to the chair. I'm going to yield to you as far as which firm you'd like to deal with. Uh, and I have experienced some good things as, as the counselors have in, in the landfill issue with the new lawyer. And, um, and again, Rob Caprara knows the community. It's nice to see somebody locally handling some of the local problems. But I am pretty well versed with the labor end of it. And, uh, I've never seen any attorney come and hold hours for the public because your attorney is basically hired to service the government, which is the council, yourself and boards and commissions to cover ourselves on some of the liability and problems that we deal with on a day-to-day basis. But again, um, I'm not an attorney. I deal with different attorneys. I am gonna weigh heavily on your opinion. You have a legal background. I think, uh, so far you have not broken the trust with the council or myself and has given a sound advice on many things. So I'm gonna sit back and, and, and listen. I don't think there are any questions that I'll have that'll change my mind with the attorney as much as when you're in the boardroom and you are working on a situation or problem. And to get the attorney to give you the best advice, I know that Copeland and Page has been a big law firm for municipalities. But, uh, this whole reorganization part, uh, I'm concerned because another council left Copeland and Page for a reason, uh, and it was over the landfill and some legal issues. But, uh, if, if you're saying there was a shakeup and you feel that this law firm is the way to go, uh, I'm leaning towards supporting your recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils? Counselor McKitty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I have, I do remember, uh, this, uh, Attorney Goldberg, I remember her a few years ago and, uh, Mr. Attorney Giorgio as well on, on the landfill. Um, I, I'm leaning towards, uh, Merrick O'Connell, I think they do a pretty good job and I'd rather just have, uh, them as representing us. I think we just have too many attorneys and it's just costing this town. I know many of the counselors have said we have a lot of high legal bills. You should be able to, you were brought in and we were told that you could handle a lot of these to help cut down on legal bills. So I would rather we just try and cut down on the, um, a number of, uh, attorneys, law firms representing us. I'm fine with Merrick O'Connell, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Steve's?
Um, yeah, I have, I, I have no problem with keeping Merrick O'Connell in general either. Um, I, I also have no problem with what, with what Mr. McCall was suggesting about his experience with KP. Um, as I said, the previous meeting, when we decided to put this item to this meeting, and that I have nothing particularly against KP. Um, I have also from the other towns that I have covered over the years, I have seen but most of them have worked with KP, so I've seen KP lawyers in action in several different communities, several of them. Um, usually for only short term, so I, I can't say I know them well, but I've seen how they do things. And they do seem to do a pretty good job. They seem to know what they're talking about. Um, they, as I said, that all of them are town meeting selectmen towns as opposed to being town council, city forms of government. Um, but I would suspect with their numerous lawyers, they probably have some sort of experience in me, in the larger scale of municipal law and the kind of government that we have. Or if they don't, they can probably quickly come, come up to speed on it. Um, I bet that did, that did jump out at me and the fact that the Me Talman, um, Lisa Meads was formerly Newbury Department Mayor and city solicitor for some of them, so she's directly got this, that experience directly. Um, and she is, and, and Me Talman has also, and, and Mr. McCall mentioned our liquor board, but I think they've also done planning and variety of some of the land use law that, and that have gone through that office over the, in recent years. Um, so on any of them, I think all of them are, are good from various areas. And, uh, I don't have a lot of experience with Me Talman personally. Um, so I'm probably going to be inclined to, to, to accept Mr. McCall's recommendation and see how things go for the rest of this fiscal year. And then maybe we can, and just kind of see how things play out and then, then play with it for the coming fiscal year. That's kind of where I'm leaning at the moment.
Thank you, Counselor Steve's. Anybody else? Uh, I, I'm going to echo what, uh, Counsel Lazo said. I, I've had an opportunity to work with, uh, Merrick O'Connell, no, no doubt a, a, a good firm. But the change in their labor council, I'm not sure who we would get for labor, so I would be unfamiliar with, uh, whoever the new labor council would be. I agree with Counselor Lazo and Counselor Steve's that, um, I'm going to yield to the town manager's recommendation. He knows these individuals at KP Law, um, and has extensive history working with them. And there's no doubt when we, I know me personally, when we talked about bringing the town manager over and the attempt to reduce legal fees, it wasn't for the, uh, extensive issues that we might have, but it's more the day-to-day issues where we had, uh, the, the former, uh, person in that position that would utilize our legal counsel quite regularly. Uh, whereas I, I know to date, even just talking with, with the town manager, a lot of those issues that he, he likes to head, head off before he even goes to our legal counsel. And I think in the future, general government, we're going to see another proposal to further reduce our legal bills as well. Um, so, uh, that'll get over to general government. Um, so I agree with Counselor Lazo. I, I would, I yield to the town manager's expertise at this point. Um, and give a, a, a shot at KP Law to see how it goes. And like Counselor Steve said, this would be a six-month appointment for the rest of the year. That's really the only individual that we're changing hours, the labor, general municipal law. The rest of the recommendation is to keep the councils as they were acting in their capacity before. So I, I'm willing to give it a shot and see how we evaluate it over the, uh, next six months. That would be my, uh, my belief. Any other counselors? Anyone else? So I guess, uh, we'll entertain a motion to accept the town manager's recommendation, um, to keep Attorney Caprara in his current role of the activities that he does. Keep made Talman Costa for the role that they've been employed in. Merrick O'Connell to retain the services of Counselor Dave McKay to handle any of the landfill environmental issues that he's currently, because he's also, uh, looking and keeping track of the LNG proposal there on one sixty-nine. So he's familiar with that. And again, I agree with the town manager not to change the boat on that, because it would cost more to bring that attorney up to speed. And that KP, uh, Law becomes the general municipal and labor council for the town of Southridge. Is that?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Any other discussion? See you in a row call?
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Joe Van?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
No.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, thank you. I'll perform or what's on here, but I will do console form because it is a regular part of our agenda item. I missed that when I reviewed the agenda, my apologies. So we will start with Counselor Steve's.
Um, I actually, I'm sorry to, I just, I forgot to add that on when I was putting together the agenda, so that's my bad too.
Whoa, write that down today, no.
Put them in a penalty box.
To make sure we don't get really long debates and propose anything for, for voting, which we can't do anyway, so. Um, anyway, I just, I don't have anything specific other than to wish everybody happy holidays, whether you celebrate Christmas or Hanukkah or Diwali or Yule or Kwanzaa or whatever. Um, that is, and have a, have a great new year and we'll see you in twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Counselor Steve. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quick, uh, I wanted to congratulate, uh, AOC Spencer again on, uh, winning Patrol Officer of the Year for the state of Massachusetts. Appreciate what Chief, um, what's it did by putting her in and obviously the residents who help support that as well. Um, I wanted to, uh, reiterate the, what was said earlier for those residents that weren't here at the very beginning, when we talked about the COVID and the vaccine, uh, area over at the community center. This is not for just regular residents, so please do not arrive at the community center thinking you are going to get a vaccine shot. It's not going to happen. You'll be asked to, uh, to leave. It's specifically and strategically going to be given to those first responders and those individuals that work at Harrington Hospital, the staff. Um, I will say this, one thing, when I talked to Harry, who is from Harrington Hospital, this is obviously going to be consistently fluid. Uh, please stand by, stand by for new instructions. Uh, this is to the town. Uh, as, as vaccines are approved. As, as vaccines are approved by the FDA, there, there will be more out on the market, but still we have to go by the state's requirements through a stage approach. So again, if you have any questions, comments, whatever, maybe you get ahold of your town counselors. But again, this is specifically for Harrington Hospital staff and those first responders that they can fit in based on the amount of vaccines that were received for the state or at least for the town. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and happy and thanks to the town council for all the work that you guys did this past year and sacrifices that you make on a daily basis. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everybody. Thanks for all the people working hard to improve the town. Regarding who and regarding who's agree, who's not, thanks for their work and their time and happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I actually have a question for the town manager. Counsel Adams just made me think of it. What I, I understand that the vaccines are going towards those who are working in Harrington Hospital. How is the nursing home being addressed in this? And specifically, there is a COVID unit in that facility as well as workers who put themselves on the front lines every day dealing with these residents, and I don't want them to be forgotten about in this process.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I, obviously Chief Norman is, is no longer with us and he might have a better recollection. But I believe that they, that is something that they're planning before it goes to the general public, that there would be high risk populations in, and other workers that would be vaccinated before the general public. I could, if with your indulgence, talk with Chief Norman and get you a direct answer or an answer to the entire council tomorrow. If, if that would be acceptable, because I don't have that answer for you this evening, Counsel Ryan.
Thank you. And I just, in our meeting today, to that point, we did discuss that. And it was brought up that DPH does have a plan in place for, I, I think through the contract with the pharmacies that the nursing homes are, some nurses homes have signed on to it. So that is in progress, but we'll get a better answer like Tom Andrew said. But the nursing homes are, are being addressed and they are at the top of the priority list. So that, just how it's delivered is being worked out right now, but it is on, on the higher priority end to your point.
I don't have the timeline in, so that's what I'll have to give you.
Thank you. If you can try to see, yeah, if you can get us all the details tomorrow, that'd be fine. Also, if you can see if, you said the nursing homes had to apply to DPH for these vaccines. Can you see if the Southbridge Rehab Facility has done that? Because I'm really concerned about the workers in particular there.
Yeah, I'm not going to quote anymore of what the conversation was this morning because I don't want to speak out of turn. So I'll let the town, I'll defer to the town manager to make sure we get those answers to that. But I do know that the conversation this morning was that the nursing homes were being addressed and that were a high priority, higher priority in that, on the realm of the delivery.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is my final thoughts. This has been a wonderful, you know, six, seven months on, on council, working with everybody. It's been, I think we've made a lot of progress as a community since my term has started and I look forward to the wonder, the continuing progress in the coming years. And I wish everyone a wonderful holiday season and please be safe. Please try to stay home if you can. I understand everyone wants to be there with their families, but as we saw with Thanksgiving, we're seeing huge spikes and we really need to make sure that we're not only protecting ourselves, but we're protecting the people around us. Please stay home. Please don't travel, social distance and wear your masks and have a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you. Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did send out an email today to the town manager concerning some trash that's on Pine Street. And I know I haven't really given you much time to look into it, but I would appreciate it if you would look into it. This was mentioned on social media and I know how some people feel about social media, but in this day and age, it's, it's very difficult to meet in person anymore. So social media is one of the ways you have to go. And like I said, I just hope you have a chance to look into it and see if that could be cleaned up.
Yeah, I just, I did, before the meeting, I did speak to Mr. Pelletier about it. And he was working on some contact tracing and some other COVID related matters, but he said that he would look into it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm really, I'm really glad to see that this vaccine is coming, coming to us now because it's really, this has really been a difficult year. And, and to me, this is like a godsend that we're going to finally have something hopefully can get us back to some kind of normalcy. I'm looking forward to it and I, I think everybody else is too. And I would just like to say happy holidays to everybody as well and have a good one. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Simply Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Lazo.
Oh, yes. I got a couple of things. One of the things I wanted to bring up was I attended a virtual planning board meeting with a couple of the other counselors and stuff. I saw an amazing thing and I have to throw an attaboy out there. For one of the planning board members, I commend the planning board on their handling of the cannabis store on Mechanic Street. But an interesting thing happened at that meeting. There was a gentleman who's been on the planning board for decades, a good friend of mine. I've served for decades with him. His name is Larry Spinelli. He came out with a comment and said that ever since he left Vietnam, he's been an anti marijuana guy. And I share his viewpoint because I've never experimented with marijuana in any way, and I think it's a gateway drug. And I thought that, you know, it should not be legalized when the ballot question came up. But it passed and I'm a believer in the ballot. And as we move forward, this community, when, when I got involved with these counselors, Ms. Chairman, we turned it around and made it a positive income for the town of Southbridge. The reason why I thought we have to move forward with this, although I don't believe, I'm not a big marijuana guy, was the same reason Larry Spinelli came out with it. He said that he thinks for the good of the town, he's putting his personal opinion aside. Very rarely do you see that in government. The personal opinion usually overrides in, in some cases, the good of the town. And as I thought of it from the revenue side, if we do not open up dispensaries, they're opening up in Charlton, Sturridge, all around us, our citizens would leave and purchase it one mile over the border. And we would lose the six percent taxation. So I thought of it from the business standpoint, let's go forward with the dispensaries and supported them. But I thought it was a ray of sunshine when you see somebody on a board and commission, board or commission, putting the town first over their personal opinion. I think Larry Spinelli should be commended. I want to just throw out an attaboy to Larry. Keep up the good work on the planning board. You made it a nice building. You modified the site. You did a great job as the whole board did on this one. And again, it will generate income for roads and sidewalks and other capital improvements as, as the town council sees fit. And I, I just want to throw an attaboy out to Larry. Secondly, I'd like to thank this council and this new town manager for a very pleasant year as far as governing. I think the twenty twenty has been a rough year on everybody. We're going to get through this. I am an optimist. Two thousand twenty one on New Year's will make our New Year's resolutions. And hopefully the council and this manager will continue the workings that we started, moving this town forward and getting a great line of communication amongst the boys and commissions so we can set this town on a positive track forward. And thirdly, I'd just like to say Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to each and every citizen of the town of Southbridge and especially my colleagues on the council and town manager. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Lazo. Counsel Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. First, I'd like to say thank you to Peg Dean for hitting the road running. Great job, absolutely great job thinking outside the box, pushing us forward, giving the council things to think about. We may not always agree on everything that is coming forward, but at least we've got people now on the team that are looking to move us forward, that are pushing us forward and keeping our feet to the fire. And I think that's very important. I think we're, we're working to keep going forward. I think that's very, very important. And I'm glad that this council is up for that task for, for keeping our feet to the fire and moving forward. I'd like to congratulate Town Manager McCall on his first ninety days. Welcome aboard. It's been ninety days. We've taken it easy on you. Now you're going to see what it's really like working in town here.
He took counsel for him once and re-.
I'd like to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and the happy holidays to the people in town. Be safe. We want to see you all back here for our next council meeting, which is Monday, January eleventh in the year twenty twenty one. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counsel Adams sent a message saying the public information page is back up. So thank you, Counsel Adams for that. So appreciate that. All right. Thank you all again to everybody. Happy holidays and a happy new year. We look forward to twenty twenty one and bringing this year to a close. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Okay, roll call.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Katrona.
Yes.
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Counsel Dow.
Yes.
Counsel Joe Van.
Yes.
Counsel Lazo.
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
And Counsel Steve's.
Yes.
Good night.
Thank you. And have a good night.
Night, everybody.